So it's six o'clock and we're going to get started. Looks like we may have a couple more people showing up, but let's go. So, welcome to regular meeting of this council. Tonight is Tuesday, April 27th and at six o'clock. Karen, could you please do?
Councilmember Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintell? You're muted.
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here. All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Randy, could you please do the flag? We're getting there. All right, I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America. And to the Republic
to which it stands.
which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful. And on that, we're going to open up for general public comments, which must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item and all comments must be referred, will be referred to staff. Any public comment, please raise your hand. I, Mr. Clark?
Oh, well, I just, that's so weird when that does that to me. Anyway, hi, everybody. Good to see you all tonight. And my only comment is that, once again, I see we've approached yet another city council meeting in April and still nothing from the sign committee that was put together. At some point, I hope that we will say, well, maybe this isn't working and put it back to the planning commission where it truly belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I am not seeing any hands, virtual hands, and I'm not seeing any physical hands. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. What I'd like to do now is make a motion to move the audit report to consent agenda. We have a very packed evening and I think there was nothing significant that was found. So I'd like to go ahead and do that. So I'd like to move, that we move that to consent. Can I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. And Karen, can you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. Okay.
Mayor, for the, I'm sorry to interrupt. For the, for the minutes if staff would reflect that probably is as new item C5.
New item C5.
Five C5.
Okay, thanks. All right, I thought I saw, so we'll move on to presentation A, the four tag update by Tammy C. And I believe I saw Mike Zeller.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Mike Zeller, I'm a principal transportation planner with the transportation agency for Monterey County, the project manager for the Ford Orchard Regional Trail and Greenway Canyon Del Rey segment projects. Also joined tonight by Lindsay Van Parish. She's the consulting lead from GHD, so help answer some questions. So just happy to be here. I want to be considerate of your time. I know you have a packed agenda, but just wanted to give you a quick update as to the project and some things that we've been working on and some things that we have coming up. So just to start, one of the things that we have done recently was to send out some announcement postcards to city residents, just to let them know about the project, that we have a project website where folks can go to get more information. And then we also included some contact information for our public outreach lead Kendall Flynn. So if folks had any comments or questions about the projects that they could reach out to Kendall directly. And I believe that we have been getting some responses back to that, which has been great. So we're working to compile all the comments that we've received so that we can provide a response to those comments. On March 25th and 26th of last month, we held our site visits. So we're pleased to have the city manager be able to join us on the first day. And then Erin Harwing represented the city on the second day. Essentially for the site visits, we just walked the proposed alignment for the project and looked at potential issues and went through some questions with different stakeholders. We had Caltrans, as I mentioned, city representatives, City of Seaside, as well as City of Monterey, as well as the Parks District as well. One of the things that we did look at was the potential alignment through Work Memorial Park. I know that's been an item of question. So if you recall, the original alignment through, through the park that was evaluated in the environmental impact report, looked at the trail staying above the hall road up on the hill. We did look at some potential alternatives, one being using a portion of the hall road, about half of it, starting from the entrance near Safeway and going to about the midway line. And then bringing the, the trail up the hill around the tennis court. Gives a nice kind of view when you get to the corner by the garden center to be able to look back over the, the park area. Another potential that we looked at was using the entirety of the hall road and bring the trail around the existing trailer that goes around the garden center. I understand that there may be potentially some drainage issues with that. So there's still some considerations that we're looking at with, you know, these different alternatives, but things that we are considering and looking to get some feedback from the community on. Which, to do that, part of that is we'll have an interactive website that we're preparing that will allow people to go on and drop points at different places on the alignment to give comments. So either give comments on potential alignment alternatives or things like requesting benches or overlooks or bike racks in certain places. So different kinds of amenities that we would like to see on the trail. So pretty excited about that. And that will be coming along with our plan for holding focus groups in the, the first and second weeks of May. So I believe either if the invitations haven't gone out yet, they'll be going out likely tomorrow to invite different groups to these focus groups. We're looking to break this up into smaller subgroups, holding, I think about five different focus group meetings. The first of which being environmental and advocacy groups. So like Audubon, Sustainable Del Rey Oaks, Fort Friends, different groups like that would be invited. Then we have a jurisdiction and agency focus group. So different cities, as well as CSU MB and the Parks District will be involved with that. And then finally, an open focus group. I believe groups like the Monterey Offroad Cycling Association, groups like that would be involved. And then finally, the last two individual focus groups for the residents on Angeles and then Carlton as well. So we have specific focus groups that are dedicated to those local communities. And then taking the information that we hear from the focus groups, we're planning to have a community workshop, looking like now the second week of June. We're still trying to nail down the date for that. We're looking at kind of a congested timeframe there with graduations. So we're having some difficulty finding a date. But once we get that solidified, we'll be able to send out notice to everybody for that as well. And so really just kind of some of the, the next steps then, as I mentioned, is getting the interactive website up and focus groups and then working towards our 60% design milestone, which is scheduled to occur later towards this fall. And Lindsay, anything that I missed?
Sorry, trying to unmute. No, there, there is nothing that you missed that I am thinking about. The only other thing is once we, probably early June, we'll be out there doing some geotechnical boring. So you will see some big rigs out there drilling some holes. And that's just so we can get geotechnical information and make sure that we're designing the tunnel correctly. So that'll be the first order of work. We'll get notices out and let, let folks know when that is scheduled. But we are working on getting encouragement permits and going through those processes now.
All right, thank you. Was that it, Michael?
I'm sorry, yes, that was it.
Okay, okay, great. Um, so I want to go to the council. Does anyone have any questions? Pat, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to thank both Michael and Lindsay for participating tonight. And also, they gave us lots of good information in a very short amount of time. Thank you for considering our packed schedule for tonight and making your presentation complete but brief. I appreciate that. Thank you.
John?
I wasn't going to say anything, but actually, because in the interest of time, but I appreciate what Pat said and thank you, thank you guys very much for the excellent presentation.
Thanks. Scott?
Yeah, thanks so much for the update. There, there is still a lot of concern from the citizens that live on Angeles. And they feel as though this is pretty much a done deal concerning the design. And I'm wondering, not only when can they have a voice in maybe some design change? I know you talked about the focus group for them. But more importantly, is there really anything that can be done to accommodate some of their concerns at this point?
Well, as we mentioned, the, the focus groups will be a great opportunity to be able to hear their concerns. And we know that we've been receiving some comments from the, the community already that we'll be responding to. The, as I mentioned, the interactive website will be another venue for them to be able to provide comments. The, the trail along Angeles Way that was reviewed in the environmental report, you know, as long as we're staying within our environmental footprint, we have some flexibility to be able to address those concerns. But there is a, you know, some certain restrictions that make sure that we stay within that, that footprint so that we don't run into issues of having to do a supplemental environmental report or something outside of what was already envisioned for the project and approved.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. Scott, were you done?
Yeah, no other questions. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
Thank you, Michael and Lindsay, for being here. Appreciate getting updates because this is a very exciting project. And so I always want to know more. So thank you. I'm really interested in your interactive website. That sounds super cool. So I'm hoping we can really help you promote that to get as much information as you can. I received an email, I think it was sometime this week, for a focus group. I responded, but I wasn't sure if, if they were targeting me or if it was just targeting like an entire list. It was a little bit unclear as, as in terms of who they wanted. So I replied and I said, you know, I'm a council member, but I'd be happy to be there. But then I didn't get a reply back. So I guess it was, you know, I'm a little unclear about that particular focus group. And so I think it was starting, you know, May 6th or something. I don't know if you have any additional information.
I'll have Kendall follow back up with you.
It's the environmental one.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, you're on the environmental one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the sustainable Del Ray Oaks.
Okay, okay, yeah, it didn't, I don't think it mentioned that. Okay, good to know. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'm sorry, Michael, if you already told us, but I just want to reiterate for all the folks on Carlton, on the main drag, not on the side, but on the main drag, as well as Angeles, when they will be receiving their, I worked with Kendall on some addresses. And so I'm wondering when they will get there. It appears like it will be a letter?
I believe it'll either be a, a letter or an email. That's just looking at approving it today. So if it hasn't gone out this afternoon, they should be going out tomorrow. Did I have that correct, Lindsay?
Yes, and those meetings are scheduled for the 11th and 13th. So we've got a little bit more lead time on that and wanted to be, try to be mindful of, of people's schedules and, and giving them an opportunity to make plans to, to attend virtually. But they should be going out here in the next couple of days, depending on comments and approvals.
Lindsay, do you happen to know which meeting is on the 11th and which is on the 13th?
Angeles is on the 13th and Carlton is on the 11th.
Great, okay, so that gives some, our community some, some, something to aim for. So let's go out for a public comment. Does anyone have any public comment? I see iPad 72 Scott. You are muted?
I apologize for not being able to get myself off mute. I'm on my husband's iPad.
That's okay. Can you tell us who you are?
Hello, Zolo. I live on Angeles Way. I'm a longtime resident of Del Rey Oaks. We oppose to this, 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 everything about this. I think you guys are putting way too much on Angeles and the residents here. We already have to deal with the park. There's so much going on in this country right now. And we don't know how our law enforcement is going to be funded. And this, this project has a potential to bring the criminal element into Del Rey people into Del Rey Oaks, 290 registrants. Some people don't know who 290 registrants are, but those are sex offenders. If, nothing good is going to come out of this for the residents of Del Rey. Put the outside area before our city. The tunnel, as we eloquently called it last time, the rape tunnel. What are the plans for policing all of this? I mean, we can't even get the gates open on a Sunday morning for the parks. So I really don't have a lot of faith that the police department is staffed well enough to deal with all the potential issues that are going to come from this. What kind of studies have you done for that? I just, I'm, I can't say enough how upset most of the residents on Angeles are. We're going to be taking the brush this. We don't appreciate it. We're very sad that our city council seems to ignore us. The last time we met, I turned over eight pages of notes. They were supposed to be put with other notes as to why this was a bad idea. They were not with the notes. So for some reason, my notes didn't get attached. And again, it was eight pages of notes. I feel like you guys don't want to hear what we have to say. I think you guys are plowing forward with this without truly thinking about the residents along Angeles Way, the additional traffic, whether it's vehicle, traffic, bicycle traffic, the impact on the creek, noise, just everything that's going to go with this. I'm very, very disappointed that you guys have gone forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I'd like to thank Michael again. And I, we look forward to the, the group discussions.
I have one more question for Michael.
Yes.
Michael, I'd like to, the letter that you're referring to that is going out, is that going only to the people on Angeles? Or is it going to all the A streets off of Angeles? And also, I live on the corner of Rosita and Angeles. Although I have a Rosita address, I'm still, my property still borders Angeles. Will I be receiving this letter?
I believe it's just for the, the residents that are on Angeles.
Thank you.
Michael, is it possible to add Ms. Lintell and the other residents?
Certainly, we can look at adding some additional participants to the focus groups.
Okay.
Mayor, if, if I may, Michael, if you want to reach out to us, we can review maps, get maybe some addresses for you and update that so that the ones that are bordering it on the corners can be included. We'd be glad to assist you with that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that help.
All right, not seeing any comments. Again, thank you for coming by and keeping us up to date.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for having us. And I will put my email address in the, the chat. So if there's any comments that folks would like to send me, they could do that after.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Does any, anyone in the public like to pull an agenda item?
Mayor, Mayor Kerr, excuse me, don't we have another presentation?
No, we moved that to the consent agenda as item C5.
The sales tax collections?
Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry. My apologies.
That's okay.
Roberto? I'm sorry, I was moving on too quickly. Is Roberto here?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here, but the presentation will be made by HDL Company, your vendor that provides those services.
Okay.
And that is Tracy.
Tracy's here, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'll jump in. And it's a pleasure to meet you, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Tracy Bussley. I'm with HDL Companies as a sales tax consultant. We are Del Rey Oaks Sales Tax Consultant. And tonight, okay, first of all, in your packet, you have a lot of materials. I'm not going to go through every single page. I am very aware of your time constraints. But I do want to walk through a PowerPoint presentation pretty quickly, kind of hit highlights on sales tax and then a few highlights, kind of statewide, regional and Del Rey Oaks. And then just to let you know that attached to the PowerPoint presentation in your materials is kind of a sales tax booklet that is really just there for your use and your review. We, we produce this and distribute it pretty much statewide. It's more of a statewide look at sales tax. But again, it's just there for your use. So in a moment, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And bear with me as I do this and hopefully I grab the right one. All right. You are seeing a presentation titled California Sales Taxes, correct?
No.
You're not?
No.
Oh, because I haven't shared it yet.
There it is.
I am the worst with Zoom. We use Teams all the time, so I always stumble with Zoom. My apologies. All right, so I'm going to walk through the presentation. And I would like you just to feel free to stop me, interact, ask questions. Sales tax in California is about as complex as it possibly can be. I think we're the most complex in the nation with regard to sales tax. And I'm going to go through it pretty quickly, just being aware of your time constraints. So looking at sales tax, just as an overview, what is sales tax? It is a tax on anything purchased or leased that's tangible per, personal property. Does not include a real property. That's property tax. And we all have those and that's a whole separate gig. But I'm talking about just sales tax is charged once, only when sold to the end user. And sales tax in California, since its inception in the 2030s, has over $12 billion of exceptions to it. So sales tax is primarily on goods in California. We don't really tax services. That's been in conversation for years. And so there's a lot of different exemptions, even on the good side. And then just, you know, statewide, sales tax, about 85% of it is really generated by 5% of the business types in California. All right. What is not taxed? As I mentioned, property, that's property taxes. Utilities, big volumes of utilities, gas, electric, water, not subject to sales tax. Generally, they have other types of taxes that can be attributed to them. Merchandise sold to the government, federal government. Food sold for home consumption. So at grocery stores, if I buy a bag of lettuce, that's not taxed. There are other elements of grocery store sales that of course are taxed and contribute to the sales tax base. And there's a couple of other exemptions as well. Again, I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. So sales tax follows the seller. If the inventory is maintained in California, it is sales tax. If an order is placed to an out-of-state call center and the taxes, the tax is allocated to the jurisdiction where the in-state inventory is first shipped to. So that would be sales tax. And I'll walk through that a little bit more in a moment. And again, this is all state legislated through California statute. So oftentimes when we say sales tax, we call it sales and use tax. They kind of go together. Use tax is tax charged on goods sold to California customers from out-of-state retailers. So use tax is a lot of our online transactions. It's considered sales tax, but it's actually use tax. And most use tax goes into our countywide pools that collect these out-of-state taxes. Del Rey Oaks is in Monterey County. So the Monterey County pool collects these out-of-state taxes. And how is that distributed back to you? It's based on your percentage of your base sales tax compared to the whole of Monterey County. So the base sales tax is 1%, is called the Bradley Burn Sales Tax. So your pooled revenue is based on your percentage of Bradley Burn Sales Tax compared to the whole county. So it's that ratio. You, Del Rey Oaks has two district taxes. Measures S, which is 1%, and Measure R, which is 0.5%. And those two district taxes, they have a couple names. We call them transaction taxes or district taxes. And I just wanted to kind of highlight one of the differences between your regular sales tax Bradley Burns and your district taxes. So the district tax follows the merchandise. That is, the tax is distributed to Del Rey Oaks where the goods are delivered and used. A great example of that is cars. So if a resident of Del Rey Oaks goes outside of Del Rey Oaks to buy a car, another city in Monterey County, let's just say, and that city sells the individual a car, they will pay sales tax on that car. The regular Bradley Burn Sales Tax will stay in that city where the car is sold. But your district tax, that 1.5%, follows your citizen to that dealership and then follows that person back home again. You receive that 1.5% district tax. And for agencies that don't have particularly car dealerships, just because of the volume of the tax, it's a big benefit with regard to the district tax because you're pulling that revenue back into the city. So this is in your, this slide is in your materials. It, just determining how sales tax is allocated is so complicated. I really am not going to walk through every one of these situations. For the most part, if it, if an order is placed out of state and it's, the goods are out of state, they go into the countywide pools. If it's placed in-state and the goods are out of state, they go into the countywide pools. For the most part, if it's picked up, if it's purchased locally in a local store, that sales tax will go to that store's location. So if it's in Delray Oaks, the sales tax remains in Delray Oaks. If it's shipped from, oh, there's like a number of machinations of this. But if it's, an order is placed online, it's shipped from a fulfillment center in California that's owned and operated by that merchant, then that fulfillment center is considered now a place of sale, and so the revenues would stay in that jurisdiction. So generally, out-of-state goes into the pools, in-state kind of stays either in the jurisdiction or where the order is filled. Again, that is a real simplistic overview of sales tax allocation. I apologize. We could talk all night about this, especially if you have insomnia. But I'm just gonna, I certainly can answer questions, but I'm going to move on. One thing just to note with sales tax, and I recently did meet with the city manager to walk through the fourth quarter results for Delray Oaks, is much of it is confidential. So one of the things we're required to adhere to by state revenue and taxation code is we cannot divulge the amounts of tax paid by a taxpayer. We can't indicate whether a taxpayer's returns are up or down. And of course, we can't give away personal addresses for home proprietors. So it's a little bit, you know, there's a lot of confidentiality there. It's a little bit restrictive, especially with a smaller agency. So obviously, you only have a number of businesses within Delray Oaks. And so it's pretty obvious, if you drive down the street, you know who your primary taxpayers are. What we can't do is talk about their gross receipts and their revenues. That's considered proprietary. So I just wanted to note that. All right, some trends in kind of sales tax nationwide and California-wide. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. One of the trends right now is we just have too much square footage across the nation, especially as online has taken off the way it has. Malls, big, big footprint stores are really struggling right now. They just have too much square footage. And just on a per capita, you can see this graph compared to a couple of other countries. You can just really see, we take up a lot of space in the United States. E-commerce doesn't. It's, you know, it's all virtual like we are right now. And, you know, they're kind of taking away from the brick and mortar establishment to what used to be things that drew us in, like, you know, you get to go in, you're inspired to buy stuff because you see it, it's convenient, because you just stop buying your way home from work. For me, it's instant gratification because I get to walk out with it. And even sometimes waiting two, three days for an online delivery, you know, even at this point, I get annoyed. It's crazy that I am that spoiled that four days is too long to wait for something online to come to my door. But these, you know, e-commerce is definitely starting to eclipse brick and mortar in that regard because we're getting so used to it, especially these last 12 months. And the other thing that's kind of changing how we buy stuff is social commerce. Eighty-five, eighty, eighty percent of the population uses social media. Many use it more than others. I'm not on it as much as my kids are. But social media is kind of another platform for purchasing goods online. So that's just another area that's kind of taking over a part of that space. And of course, the economy, as it shifts, as we're going to more online, we're seeing bigger distribution centers. We're shifting from kind of retail jobs to more of the warehouse jobs. And, you know, it's just, and it's even a different labor pool. And we see it across the United States, and we see it definitely in California, just the investment in these resources in the big data centers and the logistics and distribution and fulfillment centers. It's just almost been exponential in the growth these last few years. However, you know, brick and mortar is not going away, and I think it's here to stay. I think it's rebranding itself and figuring itself out again, almost for as many stores that are closing, and many are closing. We, you know, we've seen articles in the paper, online, and reading about some of the bigger store closures. A lot of the fast fashion has closed, but Kmart and JCPenney, some really big establishments. I think every department store from my youth is now gone. They just don't even exist anymore. It's interesting how that's changed. But for as many that have closed, almost as many are reopening. So again, it's just a shift. And it's a style shift as to what kind of establishments those are. One of the items, you know, that's kind of interesting as we're dealing with sales tax in California is with online purchasing and the big warehouse and fulfillment centers, there's less places of sale. So the consolidation of order desks, there's less places of sale, so the sales tax isn't distributed as widely. And that's, that's one of those things that we struggle with right now in California. You can see just kind of the fulfillment center versus department store 13-year, 13-year history. You know, less than 1,000 fulfillment centers. And now just, you know, 5,000 department stores. So you can kind of see the shift in how sales tax is being run. All right, getting into a few more details. So in recent quarters with COVID and the pandemic, there's definitely been a pandemic economy and the impact. It's impacted Delray Oaks Sales Tax for sure. But we can see in California from a point-of-sale perspective, I don't know if you can see my, my arrow, but you can see kind of around first quarter of 2020, the pandemic hadn't really hit full force, but it was ramping up. But, you know, if point-of-sale was starting to come down, and then you can just really see first quarter, second quarter of 2020, this big COVID dip. But you can also see the pool revenue, this blue line, that trajectory is rising. And that's really online sales taking hold. So as brick and mortar started to diminish in the state, online sales pushed up. And you can really see it here. So Wayfair is the Supreme Court ruling from back in, oh, 2018, I believe it was. And it created, as a result, California adopted Assembly Bill 147, which allowed California to collect out-of-state online sales taxes. And those big marketplace facilitators like Zappos, Wayfair, Amazon, to collect and remit sales taxes from their third-party affiliates. And, you know, if you shop on Amazon, you know you're buying stuff not just from Amazon, but there's a bunch of other folks there too. Previously, we didn't have to pay sales tax when we bought that stuff, now we do. And you can see the impact in California. It's just huge, 43% growth in kind of that online sales tax stream from AB 147 has been a huge boost to our countywide pools because that's where the revenue goes and has definitely helped kind of bolster sales tax overall statewide when everything else started to, you know, fall down. I think I just, did I miss a slide? I apologize. Nope, I didn't. So City of Delray Oaks Sales Taxes, Bradley Burns Sales Tax is 9.25%. So if you wa, if I walk into a store in Delray Oaks and buy goods, this is the sales tax I'm paying. Part of it is the state tax. 1.5% of it is dedicated to measures S and R. Again, S is 1%, R is 0.5%. So that's your one and a half cent district taxes. But that's the total rate. There's some county rates that go in there, some transportation and public safety rates that all comprise both the state and local sales tax rate. Every city has, as you know, every city has a different rate based on anything, you know, any measures that have been voter-approved at the county level and/or at the city level. So measures RNS are voter-approved by Delray Oaks voting citizens. Because of confidentiality, I can't go into all the details for fourth quarter based, or, you know, even for fourth quarter based on sales tax returns, but I did include kind of a regional comparison of sales tax, looking at, adjusted on a per capita basis, these last 13 quarters, Delray Oaks, Monterey County, and Central Coast is a region, and then the state, of course. And you can just see, Delray Oaks is the large green line. The trend lines are pretty similar. You just see right here between quarter one and really part of quarter two of 2020, that is when our stay-in-place orders had hit hard. Most stores were shut down and sales tax just fell through the floor. We are seeing it rebound, but, and you can actually see it rebound in the third quarter. And then in the fourth quarter, we had another shelter-in-place order, and things kind of shut down again, and you see that dip in sales tax. Now we're starting to see that come back again. Just kind of from a dollars perspective, sales tax in Delray Oaks. Looking at this chart, fiscal year 2018-19 was the last fiscal year before COVID. So this was, and we had our Bradley Burns 1% and the one and a half percent in district taxes in Delray Oaks. So you can see kind of what those total amounts are. So the total, about 1.4 million dollars in 2018-19. 2019-20 hit, and half of that fiscal year was impacted by the pandemic. And you can really see, sales tax took a 16% dip. And actually, nosedive would probably be a better term. So it really fell. And so now it's about 1.1 million dollars this last fiscal year. We're currently in fiscal year 2021, and while it's still down, it's starting to level off. And we're kind of trending and anticipating another 1% dip for the current fiscal year. But then going into next fiscal year, we're seeing that rebound. We're coming out of the shelter-in-place, and stores are back open. We can eat out again. And I really think that we'll see that increase. We're not back to pre-COVID levels yet. That's going to probably take 22, 23 fiscal year, but we're getting there. But again, Delray Oaks, small community, just a small amount of sales tax producers within the city. So it's, it's been a challenge. It's definitely been impacted. And with that, I think I'm going to pause and see if you have any questions.
Great. Well, thank you very much. So I want to go out to the council first. Excuse me, Vice Mary Lynn Tell, any questions? Tracy, is it possible for you to stop sharing your screens?
Oh, yes.
That's okay.
I would, I would love to. Thank you for the reminder.
I have no questions, but I would like to thank Tracy for the very informative presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gagliotti?
Is our cannabis tax rolled into the sales tax, or is it a separate tax altogether?
It's considered sales tax, so it's rolled in. It's part of the overall.
Okay, all right. And I guess you can't, I can't answer this question because what's the, maybe you can do it in percentages. What's the percent hit by industry? Can we, can you tease that out, or do you have that?
I don't have that handy, but I could probably tease that out and provide that to the city manager and have him share that with you. It's a good question. So when you say hit, are you talking about?
That's 16%. That's 16% from last year.
Okay, yeah. I can do that. I believe.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to, John, on our budget documents, the sale or the tax for cannabis is separated out.
Okay.
Just to make sure that that's, that's clear.
Okay, but the aggregate, I mean, our aggregate sales tax should, should be trimmed right with that number, correct? That 1.123 or whatever it was last year?
Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Yeah, so we're about 1.3.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So it's within that, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Just one quick question. When you presented the projections, what is that mainly based on?
So looking at the projections for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, when we do that analysis, it's based on every single business. So I go in and I look at every single business, their sales tax returns, how they're trending. If I know anything special about, say, a remodel or closure, a new business, I add that in. And then I layer on top of that kind of the regional trends by each group. Knowing, for example, fuel and service stations statewide, and almost every single agency that has a gas station is seeing those revenues low because gas prices have been low, and we've not gone anywhere. So I'm looking at those kinds of trends as well. And, you know, macroeconomic stuff is great, but really for sales tax, I kind of keep it really personal and focused on the actual businesses within the city.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Great. Ms. Shirley?
Thank you, Tracy, for the presentation. I certainly learned something new, and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
So Tracy, myself included, the, the two things. So for example, you know, unfortunately, over the last six months, we've lost two businesses. And so you're aware of that, and you're going to be building that into our projections?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Great, I have nothing further. So let's go out to the public. Anybody have any public comment? I am seeing no hands, so we'll bring it back to the council. Any last questions or comments for Tracy?
No, thank you.
Okay. Tracy, thank you so much for bringing it. It's fascinating. I can only imagine your Excel sheets.
They're, they're large, but you're very welcome. Nice to meet you all.
Ditto. All right, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And does anyone in the public want to pull any item? Okay, any council person want to pull any item? I can't see everybody. I would actually like to pull two items. The item A2, the council minute, council meeting minutes, and B3, the financials. And I just want, let me start with the financials because it ties into what we were just talking about. And I just wanted to make some notes that our sales tax estimate or the budget is at 104%. So we're doing a little better than we had budgeted. And additionally, the property tax is at 61%, but that does not include the April property tax that it hasn't trickled down to us yet. So that may be a little higher than we anticipated as well. And finances, the other thing is I don't see the CARES Act 50K under the grants. And so I know Roberto's here, and so I wanted to see if that was, if I was missing something? Is Roberto's?
Yes, Mayor, the CARES money went into a separate fund. If we keep going, there's another fund for the CARES money where it actually came in. And then it's transferred, it was transferred over to the general fund. So it's at the very bottom, and for everything you said and done, it's a transfer into the general fund.
And one other item, the payroll tax on page two of the Statement of Revenue and Expenditures. It states that our payroll expense is $10,720, and I'm wondering if that should be $1,072. And I'm wondering if that should be $1,072. It seems, there may be an extra zero there.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's an ongoing error in the system. We're, we're trying to get it fixed. It's not, that is not the payroll tax.
Okay.
There's other items that keep posting in there. We keep pulling them out. We're trying to work with the vendor to, so it doesn't post in there anymore.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else have anything to say about the financials? Okay, um, and then I want to go on to the minutes. Um, on page six, um, I just wanted to state that I stepped down from the sign committee because we can only have two council members. And with the election, Kim Shirley was elected, moving her from a public participant to a council member. I did not step down because I couldn't or wouldn't participate. Um, and this statement, uh, reads like I did. So if we could, um, change that, that would be great. Um, and then just two other items, uh, I just wanted to mention. Um, we will be receiving $311,000 over the next two years for COVID. Um, as we look at our financials, uh, the letter from Congressman Panetta is in the, uh, correspondence. Um, that is on top of the $50,000 that, uh, Roberto and I just, uh, spoke about. And additionally, we will have access to $177,000 for parks from the state of California. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was, um, up to date on, uh, we're doing a little better than it looks like on, on the budget. So, um, on that, uh, that was all I had for the consent agenda. So, um, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve the agenda.
I move that we, is it, you can, yeah, I, I move that we accept the consent agenda with the, the edits the mayor made in A2 and B3. Is it right?
Yeah.
Is that good?
Was that Pat?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Karen, can you, uh, do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shirley?
Hi.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Hi.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Hi.
Mayor Kerr?
Hi. All right, it passes unanimously. So let's move on to new business. Item A, Resolution 202109 honoring Dino Pick. Uh, this was requested by Vice Mary Lintel and Councilmember Gagliotti. Uh, so I'd like to turn that over to the Vice Mayor.
Um, thank you, Allison. Dino, uh, it is my honor to recognize you for all you did for the city of Delray Oaks and its residents. And now I would like to read Resolution Number 2021 dash 09. A resolution of the Delray Oaks City Council in appreciation of dedicated service to the city of Delray Oaks by Dino Pick. Whereas Dino Pick served as the manager of the city of Delray Oaks from March 2017 to February 2021. And whereas Dino's financial acumen and leadership transformed Delray Oaks' final financial position from one of near bankruptcy to being solvent in the strongest in the his, city's 67-year history. And whereas, under Dino's leadership and financial stewardship, Delray Oaks, Delray Oaks paid off $500,000 for a debt and established the first reserve fund of over 1.5 million dollars. And whereas Dino conceived, drafted a plan for, negotiated, and implemented the merger of the Monterey Regional Airport's Police Department with Delray Oaks, resulting in additional police coverage for the airport and the city at a reduced cost to both, saving $250,000 annually for each jurisdiction. And whereas his tireless work as Chair of the Administrative Committee of the Fort Ord Reuse Authority brought $9,619,399 to the city's capital improvement program fund. And whereas Dino provided the leadership and guidance to our public works and staff, resulting in the revitalization of our park and green space to include elimination of the dog park fees. Excuse me. Whereas, uh, Dino, with an eye on protecting the environment, initiated, carried out plans and completed the installation of the solar panels on City Hall. And whereas Dino coordinated the Delray Oaks segment of Fortag in synchronized efforts among several air agencies to provide a safe pathway for bikers and walkers. And whereas Dino facilitated the group recruiting of Jeff Hine to the position of Chief of Police and subsequently, his promotion to the position of Acting City Manager. And whereas Dino conducted regular monthly meetings with citizens to promote transparency during he treated all with dignity, respect, and politeness. And whereas Dino has the ability to remain focused on the issues and work towards solutions that were not driven by emotion through incorporating expert opinions, council desires, and public input. And whereas Dino always created a welcoming atmosphere at City Hall. Excuse me, where he always made time for residents and council members. And whereas his staff enjoyed and respected his hard work and leadership, he fostered a positive and productive work environment like no other. And whereas Dino was always fair and honest. And where he was respected and admired by community leaders and city staff for his hard work and leadership. And whereas Dino was committed to the success of Delray Oaks and often dedicated much of his time outside of normal business hours. And whereas we thank Dino Pick for all he has done for Delray Oaks and wish him success and happiness in his future adventures. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of, that the city council of the city of Delray Oaks does hereby approve Resolution Number 2021 dash 09 in appreciation of the dedicated service to the city of Delray Oaks by Dino Pick, passed and adopted as a resolution of the City Council of the City of Delray Oaks at a meeting held on this 27th day of April, 2021. Patricia Lintel, Vice Mayor.
Uh, my Vice Mayor, would you like to go ahead and do the, uh, uh, council comments and public comments on this, on this, uh, piece?
Uh, no, you go ahead, please.
Oh, okay. Um, so let's go to council members. Uh, John Gagliotti?
Well, I mean, I think, um, I think that the resolution says it all. It was a pleasure working with Dino. Um, he was a mentor in many respects, and then we also learned a lot of things together. Uh, he was amazing to work with, um, on FORA, uh, in the admin. Um, he was, he chaired the admin committee, um, which gratefully expedited a lot of some of the more controversial, um, issues, especially in the closing down of FORA. Um, I, I would say that FORA owes him a great debt, uh, or, or a debt of gratitude uh, in helping expedite that process. And then also just in bringing, you know, money to this, money that was, that was owed to us. It was money that had been deferred. Uh, I know a lot of people, um, towards the end were, were saying, how, why does Delray Oaks kind of get the money that it was getting out of FORA? And it was, it was always the plan for Delray Oaks to get the money that it got. It's just the Delray Oaks had been very patient and had let other jurisdictions, um, yeah, develop, you know, before us because they were, they were in, uh, in greater straits and, and they needed, they needed that. Um, but when it came time, uh, Dino and, and also too, Mayor, uh, Elin too, um, made it, you know, made it known and vi- fought for our, for our little community to get every dollar that we got. And I was, I was happy that I got to kind of step in the, in, in the last, you know, take the ball to the last, to the last, uh, 10 yards or so and bring it back. And so, and that was a great learning experience and I really appreciated working with Dino on that. So.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, I know Dino's about ready to get showered with a lot of adjectives, so I won't add to that. But I will share this with you, that I think the true measure of a leader is re- is reflected in the people that they lead. And I look around this meeting and I see all the staff members that are here. And they're here to honor someone that they deeply respect and deeply admire. And I will tell you that they will do anything for him. And it's because, simply because that they want to do it. It's not for money or any incentive like that. They do it because they want to, because of the type of person he is. And that's the kind of leader he is. And it's, it's unfortunate that we no longer have him in the city. But our loss is obviously someone else's gain. And the Navy School's lucky to have him. Dino, thank you so much for everything that you've done for the city and best of luck to you.
All right. Uh, Ms. Shirley?
Dino, I didn't get to work with you as a council member, but I really enjoyed interacting with you as a resident. So, um, thank you. I, I don't know, you and I, I, I felt like we, we got along pretty well and you were very responsive to all my questions and very patient. And I appreciate that. So, um, best of luck to you in your endeavors.
Okay. Um, I would also like to note your work to get Delray Oaks to become a member finally of Central Coast, um, Community Energy, which is a huge, um, uh, value for our, uh, not only our city, but also, um, our residents. And, um, that, I know that that wasn't easy. And so there were many, many things that, uh, we worked on that weren't easy. And, um, I appreciate all your time and, uh, the, all the efforts you did on behalf of the city. So thank you. Uh, what I'd like to do is go out to the public now. Uh, I see Dennis Ali on.
Hi, uh, yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, just a real quick, thank you, Dino. Um, I can't think of a better man to fill that job that you're doing at the, uh, postgraduate school. With your international background, your skill in other languages, and your ability to empathize, motivate. You're perfect. So thanks for the time you devoted to Delray Oaks. I don't know how many people can truly appreciate the quality of the individual that we had as our city manager. Under your leadership, uh, you were extraordinary. I think Jerry Edelen summed it up very nicely. You have gravitas. So thanks again, Dino. Great job. Well done.
Any other public comment? Mr. Edelen? You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, huh, you all know I've stayed away from the city council meetings for the last couple of years. Main reason allowing our new mayor to get her feet on the ground and find her own way of leading the council and move the council in her own, uh, direction, uh, with leadership. But I see things going in the wrong direction. And there are two items on this agenda that just made me see red, and that's why I'm here. And I've got to, I've got to say what I've got to say. Resolution 202109 honoring Dino, Dino Pick requested by Vice Mayor Lintel and Councilmember Gagliotti. When in the heck do council members have to request a resolution honoring one of the most important people to be in this city since its inception and brought us from bankruptcy to the point where we're doing really well right now? And when does the Vice Mayor sign the resolution rather than the mayor? I would like to, uh, thank Mayor Lintel and Councilmember Gagliotti, uh, for the request to do that. But, uh, I, I think it's shameful that it's come to that. I think there's something going on between our mayor and, uh, Dino Pick. And there's something spite going there, and that's not a demonstration of leadership. The bottom line is, is any member that serves an organization honorably, uh, helps that organization, departs the organization, deserves to be honored fully and, um, uh, deserves to be recognized when they leave. I suggest that a sign be placed somewhere in the council chambers that states, what is the right thing to do? One's personal relationship should have nothing to do with what is the right thing to do. As long as you always ask that and you answer that question, you'll never go wrong. The proclamation prepared by Vice Mayor Petland Tell lists Dino's, just some of Dino's outstanding accomplishments. I don't want to rehash those, but just to relate a couple others as to how valuable Dino was to our city. You realize Dino took a leave of absence to serve our country in Washington DC. What you may not be aware of is he was selected to work in the Office of the Deputy Staff for Operations Plans, known as DESOPS, in the special operations field. Dino retired as an O6, a full colonel. Uh, for his job, he was specifically selected to be brought in to help run special ops as a three-star general equivalent senior executive service. My last, I spent 21 years in the Army, my last four working in DESOPS. I've never heard of anybody historically, or even up to this point, that was promoted from O6 to O9 to come in and do a job that was as critical to the national security of our country as Dino Pick was. That shows the type of quality that man really is. One other point I, I want to make is that unless you've been in politics for a while, you won't understand how important it is to develop sound personal relationships with all the powerful political players in the region. Dino, having served as an Assistant City Manager of Monterey and on key regional boards as our city manager, was able to parlay his knowledge, personal relationships, and expertise to assist our, our city immeasurably. When he took over the city, we all know, he took the city, we were almost bankrupt financially, we were pretty close to it. He analyzed the situation, made the right recommendations to the city council, which adopted his resul- his, uh, recommendation. And when he departed, as was said earlier, our budget's in the best shape of its city's history. Dino was also personally able to bring in, not only what was mentioned earlier, another $2 million in, uh, I won't go into details because it, it's legal, but, uh, it's one of those things. He was able to do it. None of the other city managers was able to do it. Dino brought home the bacon. In closing, I just want to say that Dino matter, uh, Dino Pick is not just the finest city manager I've ever known in 22 years of politics. He's one of the finest, most honorable men I've ever known. It was an absolute privilege and honor to work with him.
Thank you, Mr. Edelen.
Thank you.
Um, uh, George Jackshaw?
Yes, as, uh, past Chair of the Planning Commission, uh, Dino helped me out many times in, uh, trying to resolve several, uh, problems that we had, uh, for agenda items. So I want to thank him for that. And, uh, I hope, uh, that the new mayor is at least half of what Dino was. He was really a truly amazing person and we were blessed to have him in, uh, our city. So, uh, thank you very much, Dino. Appreciate it.
Uh, Louise?
Good evening. Um, I would like to thank Dino. Um, I served with him. And honestly, I, uh, really enjoyed the two years, uh, a little over that, that I was on the city council and greatly appreciated his guidance and insight on the mucky waters I stepped into. And, uh, it was just a very great learning experience. And, um, I can't thank him enough. And the city has really, really got some really big boots to fill. Not just shoes, um, but boots and, and, uh, and I wish him all the best and, uh, hang in there. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. Any?
I'm sorry, if I may, from the Police Department, I would like to, uh, also thank, um, uh, Dino Pick for his leadership. Um, he made us better from day one. Same I could say about Chief Hoin. Um, we already hugged it out, so we've said our goodbyes already. I don't need to do it on Zoom. Um, but he was, he was a great, great man, good sense of humor too. He's really funny. Um, and I miss him. So thank you.
Any other public comment?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
This is just from the staff. We love you. We miss you. You're the best that's ever been. You know, when you came on board, Dino, Kim and I had PTSD from the last city manager. And you handled that with Dino hands. I mean, it was just- I mean, it was just perfect. Thank you, from the bottom of my heart. And we've said our goodbyes, too, and we've hugged it out and all that, but thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Mr. Clark?
I'm actually going to cover two things here. The thing that, the proclamation that was read, three words really struck out, stuck out to me. He deals with people with dignity, respect, and politeness. I'm 68 years old. I wish I had met this man 40 years ago. I'd be a lot better than I am today, but I can tell you that with the years I have left, that's one of my goals, is for people to say of me that I dealt with them with dignity, respect, and politeness in every situation. Now, quick turn. Kristen wishes she could be here, and you know the wonderful thing she'd have to say to you, Dino. Had a family matter that took her away, so just know she's here and she loves you. I'm done.
Any other public comments? Ron, do I see you? Is that you behind the beard? You're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So, thank you, and I just want to say, Dino, you already know, again, we all hugged it out and said goodbye, but what a great, great person, human being. I'm so blessed to cross paths with you and for you to, you know, handpicked me to come run Public Works. It's been a great honor, and, you know, like Jim said, I wish I would have met you 40 years ago. I'd be a lot better man than I am today, so just thank you, buddy. I appreciate everything you've done for me and always had my back, and I love you, man. And Denise says, "Me, too." So, thank you.
Any other, any other public comments? I'm not seeing any. What I'd like to do is before we go, I mean, we can either vote or we can hear from Dino next.
Let's hear from Dino.
Okay. So, Dino, would you like to say a couple of words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wow, I was, I was in good shape until Karen and Ron spoke. Well, listen, let me, let me just say thank you to, to Mayor Edelin, Vice Mayor Clark, Councilmember Buckley, Councilmember Getzelt, and the current council. Thank you all for your leadership and, and your commitment to your community, this city that's been my pleasure to, to serve for the last several years. Planning Commissioners, past and present, thanks for what you've done. Thanks for stepping up and serving like the council, unpaid, largely unappreciated, and yet out of a sense of commitment to your communities. Thank you for all the kind words tonight. My, I would, I would say two things. One, to the, to the community. You know, there, there is a crisis of narrative in this country today that is, that is tearing asunder. We can see it locally, we can see it at the national level. I lived it at the national level in a horrible way. And the federal government exists to protect this nation so that communities like ours here can thrive. Please, please, don't let the divisiveness come to roost here. It is, it is almost impossible to resist. When you look at social media, whether it be neighborhood, Nextdoor Name, Facebook, or other social media, or just get fired up with, with the cable news networks, it is so, so terribly easy to get drawn into the extremes rather than lean into those you might not agree with, but define, but you live with, literally down the street, and to find some way of making your communities better. And so, I would just implore you all to, to continue to work to do that, because I know, having watched this council and, and the community and participated in, in a lot of the discussions, it is very, very hard to do. And lastly, I would just say to the staff, my goodness, what, what a distinct honor and privilege. You know, the Pentagon and all those very, very well-compensated, very intelligent, Ivy League degree-carrying, national security professionals who I admire and respect and loved working with have nothing on you. Not a thing. So, it was my distinct honor and privilege. I wish the city the best, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to speak.
Of course. All right, let's go back to the council, and if there are no further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
You want to make it?
Sure. I'd like to move that we accept the Resolution Number 2021-09 honoring our previous city manager and thanking him for his service to our city. Dino Pick, you are the greatest.
I will willingly, overwhelmingly second that.
Okay. Karen, could you do a roll call vote, please?
My pleasure. Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So, it passes unanimously. Dino will arrange to get you a copy of this for your wall of awards.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to new business, Item 6B, Consider Five-Step Development Plan. I'll turn it over to Acting City Manager Hoyn.
Mayor and council, and residents and visitors, thank you very much. This item is an item for action, and it is to consider a revised five-step developer selection process regarding the current RFQ, the Request for Qualifications, for the former four-door property. In October of 2019, the city published a request for qualifications for letters of interest regarding development of 230-plus or minus acres of the former four-door property. Several steps in the selection process were completed, and they were then subsequently halted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Since that time, approximately in September, late September of 2020, outreach was conducted to the finalists in that process, which developed, which consisted of two different development teams. Also, a third development team expressed interest. We started looking into the possibility of allowing the third development team to participate in the process, found out that we had no obligations under the actions that were taken in the Request for Qualifications at that time, and it was decided to start moving forward on council's direction from the original RFQ. That was to put out the Request for Qualifications and then hopefully get to an exclusive negotiating agreement with a developer to start looking at possibilities and negotiating on what could go on that property. Last month, at last month's city council, I'm sorry, this resulted in last month's city council meeting presentation giving an overview of this five-step process and letting council know that we would be bringing this item back, giving them a month to ask questions, look into it, and then we would be bringing it back at this meeting for direction on whether or not staff should proceed with the five-step process and move forward with a selection of a developer to try and enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement. Much of this work was done by our planning staff, our contract planning staff, specifically David Zender of Economic Planning Systems, who worked closely with, with staff on this. I will add that a major portion and a major focus of this is public outreach. It has been heard loud and clear over the course of the several months that I have been in the Acting City Manager's office, and of course, even before that as your police chief, that public input is very important. So, that was part of the direction given to, to staff is to develop something like that. And with that, I would like to turn it over to David Zender of EPS and let him give a quick overview of that five-step process and perhaps answer any questions. David?
Sure. Thank you, Jeff, and if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and share a screen just to bring up the PowerPoint, just to refresh everybody on what we looked at last month. Okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So, so essentially, we are embarking, hopefully, on this, this five-track process. We reviewed this last month, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but this is just a refresher. And so, there's, there's basically five different tracks that we would pursue more or less simultaneously. The first is related to Assembly Bill 1486, Surplus Land Act, and this is to ensure that we satisfy this new iteration of the state law to check with affordable housing providers to ensure that they do not see any of the city's land assets as critical affordable housing project venues. And so, this aspect of the project would be overseen by a city attorney, perhaps with any contract help that he may desire, but primarily headed by the city attorney. Second would be city and community discussions, and this is really to evaluate the city-owned property, and I would be working very closely with Denise Duffy on this. Denise, of course, is knowledgeable about all aspects of city-owned property and knows effectively where, you know, all of the, the physical development constraints reside, and so she'll be a really critical, important, a very important piece of this. One of the big topics of this track two would be to think critically about sort of what comes along in the way of new development, not just on the four-door piece, but on all of the other sites the city owns. And how do all of these sites sort of come together to create sort of this, this future build-out of the city? And so, for example, if the four-door piece is likely to be primarily a residential project, there is a number of other uses that, that often come along with residential, and I did appreciate the presentation by HDL earlier regarding retail sales tax, sales and use tax. And so, that's a good example of sort of understanding, along with residential, what else comes with the package? And so, can we handle and should we locate additional retail in the city as part of the city's future build-out? There are other uses as well in, in the, the office and industrial realm. So, this would be effectively to do a very sort of brief analysis, and we can come back to this a little bit later. But the whole purpose of this would be to define the issues that would be presented at a community workshop and that would populate a survey that would go out to the city's residents. And so, really, this is about generating content that we can use to go out and ask the key questions to the citizens of Delray Oaks about sort of how should the city look and feel, what uses belong where, and so how do we adjust out of what we have going forward? Third track would be the updated and completed developer submissions. We had a third developer that Jeff mentioned earlier, Ralph Borelli. Borelli Development dropped out about mid-course through the process, and that leaves us with two very capable developers. One is McGowan McGregor Group out of San Diego, and the second is City Venture out of San Francisco, and also Orange County. Both are highly competent, respected, capable, so the city is in good position having two very robust and reliable development entities choose from. Okay? So, that is, that City Venture has now come through and responded to the city's original RFQ. So, at this point, we are sitting in good standing with two highly qualified developers. So, where we are now in terms of next steps, you know, the tracks four and five, to complete the picture here, would be to basically interview these developers, and this would come after we receive input from the community. So, we're taking the, all the community ideas and, and sentiments and do's and don'ts, and we're going to read this out and make sure they understand where the community is coming from, and we'll put them through their paces in the context of these interviews. And then that will set the table for, as the city manager mentioned, moving into exclusive negotiation, negotiations with a chosen developer. So, out of that interview process, we would pick one. The other would be in a backup mode, but we would pursue negotiation with a selected developer on a schedule to be determined early in the E&amp;A process. So, that is the, the five-step process. Jeff, do you want me to, to cover the little bit more detail on the economic analysis, or do you just want to stop there?
David, I think we can stop there. Part, part of what is related to the five-step process, but it's actually another action item, is the approval of conducting that economic analysis. They go hand in hand, but they are separate items, and we'll talk about that in the next, the next item on the agenda. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Mayor, that is, you're muted, Mayor.
You're ready to move on, David?
If you would like, I can, I can cover the balance, or you can, you can talk about the five-step process now.
If you have additional information, please.
Okay. So, just as mentioned, sorry, I'll bring this back up. So, as related to Track Two, Community Discussions, basically, the economic analysis is a process that we would go through between Economic and Planning Systems and Denise Duffy and Associates.
I'm sorry, David. I misunderstood. I think we need to discuss this at the next agenda item.
Got it.
My apologies. I thought you had additional information on the, on the track.
On, on the five-track process. Track Two does relate specifically to all of this detail, but we can come back to it.
Got it. Perfect. All right, let's go to the council. Want to start with Ms. Lintel?
No, no questions. Thanks, David, for the presentation. I appreciate it, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Gagliotti?
Yeah, David, just to be clear, Track Two is self-funded. We, we fund that from our general fund. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we have, do we have kind of an outs, do we have an outside, an outside cost of that?
No, the, as you'll see when I get to that, 17,500 between APS and Denise Duffy.
Say again. What was that?
Seventeen thousand five hundred between the two.
Now, yeah, now I remember from last time. Okay, great. Thank you. Love you.
Scott Donaldson?
Yeah, David, thank you once again. Like before, I'm very comfortable with this process, and one of the aspects of it, I talked about it before, is the strong community outreach that's involved with it. And I know every member of the council is concerned about that, and this is embedded in there, and I think that's a great aspect. But yeah, I'm comfortable with this process, and I have no questions.
Okay. Ms. Shirley?
Thank you. Thank you, David, for your presentation. So, I just, I have a few questions. So, I want to be really clear. So, Track Two is, is not exactly the same as the economic study that, that we're going to pay seventeen thousand five hundred for? So track two is is not exactly the same as the economic study that that we're going to pay seventeen thousand five hundred for?
It's it's a little bit broader, but it's it's consumed or it's predominantly comprised of the economic analysis.
So so is it going to cost us more than the seventeen thousand five hundred? Because it's it's more, again, I'm still.
No, it's just seventeen five for the economic analysis. I'm just thinking that there are elements to the community outreach that go beyond what EPS does and what Denise Duffy does, but involves, you know, the the city manager and his staff. You know, there, we're going to get some help from the city manager in terms of of ensuring that the survey is distributed to everybody that that is supposed to get it. And some of those details.
Okay.
Member Shirley, if I may?
Yes.
So the the five step process is is the only portion of that that's funded in a in a contractual manner is the economic study. It's embedded within the five step process, although it's a separate action item and a separate funding mechanism. The RFQ will continue like we have the last couple of years with contract staff when we need them on an hourly basis to conduct the rest of the five step process, except for that study which we are defining and paying for separately on a contract.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, I guess I am a little uncomfortable not knowing how much these tracks are going to cost us, even though they're, you know, we're the saying it's within our planning budget, there isn't a dollar figure that's associated with them. So it's it's hard to say, sure, go ahead with it when we don't really know how much it's going to cost. Yes, I do want public outreach, but I I feel like there needs to be some education given to our residents. I think if you give people a survey and you don't give them context or information, I think they're not making an educated choice. And so I'm not sure if I'm, I'm happy that there's public outreach, you know, in addition to in track two. But I'd like to see something greater. I'd like to see, you know, again, I I don't, I've never done this before. But, you know, I'd like our residents to be able to be educated on the different possibilities that we have within the city and get them to think about it a little bit and then survey them. I am, I I am uncomfortable moving through the rest of the tracks. I like track one and track two. I'm uncomfortable moving through the rest of them without doing some additional work ourselves. Our general plan needs, needs an update. We haven't updated our general plan since ninety seven. I suppose now I can say I, you know, I've reached out to a professor at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, who works in city and regional planning, he's a department chair. And they go into cities with their studio class and they do general plan updates for very reasonable, dirt cheap cost. And he is interested in, you know, potentially working with our city. He needs to find a professor and see if it's a good fit, so it's not a for sure thing. But I think it's, you know, Mayor Kerr and I spoke with them and and showed them, you know, you know, our interest in this, and they they know we're waiting to hear their their answers. So I think that's a possibility to look at, updating our general plan. I'm not exactly comfortable with the original RFQ that went out. That wasn't an RFQ I I would like to have seen. I'd like to almost think about doing a new RFQ after we've done that education and we've looked at the potential for development. Just because we have developers now who are interested doesn't mean they might, you know, they may still be there. We're the ones that that hold the cards with this. And so I think we need to drive the train and and slow this down a bit so that we can make sure that we do every step correctly. We ended up in litigation the last time this happened. We need to move slowly and we need to be thoughtful. And so I'd really like us to do that. And I think moving forward with these tracks, especially when they're in parallel, I feel very uncomfortable with that. So in this, again, we haven't talked at all about South Boundary Road. Where that falls into it, I don't know how South Boundary Road alignment ties into these five tracks. I'd like to make sure we're not building a road to nowhere. I want to make sure we understand what our development is going to be as we do the South Boundary Alignment. So, you know, and I have more to say on the other tracks. But I, you know, again, I, at this point, I feel like let's go forward with one and two, and then see where we're at. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd like to go out to public comment before I ask my comments or my questions and comments. So on that, let's go out to public comment. Does anyone have any, anything to say on the five step developer selection plan?
Do you have a comment?
I do. I'm trying to raise my hand.
Dennis, we can hear you.
Yeah, I did raise my hand.
Yes, you are welcome, please.
I was, I was trying to find that hand again. Well, this is great, this is the the trade off. I mean, I can feel a little bit of empathy where where Kim's coming.
Dennis, we lost. Can you, can you start over, Dennis? We lost you there.
Okay. I can feel a little bit of sympathy, empathy with Kim Shirley's statement about concerns about the process of picking a contractor. When I first got on our council, the decision was already made. The contractor was on board. I never really felt comfortable with that guy. I asked him a lot of questions that I've, and I got these slick answers from him. So I I feel the empathy, the sympathy with where Kim is going. However, it's, I don't know that you can educate enough people in this city on on the complexities of finding a contractor that can do the right things for our city. I think we, you've got to have a process whereby you vet the contractors, see what they've done in other places, and then make your best determination based on their history and their qualifications. It's, you're going to drag this process out. We need to get moving forward, in my opinion. We are now, there was a point where we thought by night, by two thousand and five, that we would have a lot of work done out there on that property, and it never happened. Because of, not because we wound up in litigation. It's important to remember why we wound up in litigation. We wound up in litigation because that contractor lost his financial partners. He was ready to move ahead, but he lost his financial partners. And in my opinion, he was also a bit unethical. But we, we did the best we could with what the situation was. Enough said on that, I just hope you get the point across here, then I'm getting the point across. I feel like you need to move ahead. You're, if you're trying to educate our citizenry on the complexities of a major contract and the development, good luck, I don't think you can do that in the amount of time that we have to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vecchione.
I agree with Kim Shirley, this needs to slow down. We are not in a hurry. And I also believe strongly that the community has to be educated. We are not a bunch of dummies. We may not know, I don't know very much about construction at all, but I do know how to think clearly when I'm given the appropriate information. There is no hurry to move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krieger. You're muted.
Nope, there we go. Again, great. Three quinny, three quinny. And I just like to, I like the part about the public outreach, it's good, it's finally getting some, some legs. I do think that the part about it being education is important. I think that we will never get everyone involved, that's obvious, but I think you could get a lot of people more involved. I do think the survey makes me a little uneasy, just because I know you can write surveys to get any answer you want to get. So I think there needs to be, that needs to be done carefully and needs to be vetted properly to, you know, a lot of people, because surveys can be really governized pretty easily. The, I agree, the RFQ was not informed by the residents. I, the whole thing, I think, needs to happen. We educate and then get a feel for what the residents want to do with this land. We get one shot at it, we don't get a do over, once we start doing something. So I think it's important to get the vision part right. Respect what the residents would like to see happen with our land. And if there's a case to be made for, for a certain particular development, then make the case, you know, convince them. But I think it needs to be aired out, not just assume that this is, you know, we know best and we're going to move forward. And again, I just, the rushing just seems risky. You know, we still haven't had a good explanation of exactly why we end up in court, why we got sued. And it wasn't because of the economy. Lots of things went bad during the last economy, they didn't all end up in lawsuits. And I've talked to several lawyer friends of mine, and no one's given them, we come up with a good understanding of why we were settled. So, you know, it'd be nice to know exactly what happened. And that conversation really hasn't happened yet, but we don't want to make the same mistake again. We can't afford another, you know, million dollar settlement. So I'd like to see is just be careful and be good stewards of the city's land and stewards of the city's money and listen to the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Any other public comment? I'm seeing no physical or virtual hands raised, so I'm going to close public comment and come back to the council. I just want to kind of echo Kim's sentiments. Couple of things. We are in the midst of a city, city manager hiring process. And I think tied to the general plan discussion that Ms. Shirley and I had with Cal Poly, they will be able to give us a decision if they can help us with this within a couple of weeks. So I want, I would love to be able to update our general plan, and that would take one year. The other thing is, I've also been in touch with an organization that can do this visioning process for us, and they can also do that. They also have access to grant funding. So we could actually do a full bore visioning process, and the grant goes in next March. Unfortunately, we missed it by a week. I concur, you know, the one point four million dollar debt. It doesn't, the economy doesn't make sense to me that we ended up on the wrong side of a lawsuit. I also am starting to do surveys of the community. And I asked for input on three items for tonight's agenda, and one of which was this item. And I'll be sharing the data tomorrow with the vote results. But the majority of people do not support the five step plan without taking into account the general plan. The, my entire month has been involved in meetings from a White House level to a DOD Pentagon level to a state level and regional level, talking about the necessity for climate action. At the very least, we need wildfire assessment and protection plans designed for, especially for this property out at four door. This is not a light thing for the city to do. I know we've been trying to do this for decades, and it wasn't done right last time. And the the con, or the developer was not the right person, and we ended up in a lot of trouble and we, that we still have. I would, I highly support the the contract and getting a foundational document that tells us exactly the status of every piece of property we have so we can go forward with that information. So I agree with steps one and two. I think that can provide some relevant information for us as well as the community. And then what I'd like to do is take that information delay just a little bit until we can go through a formal visioning process and hopefully a general plan update. And then with that information, a new request for qualifications can be distributed. Our two developers should still be interested. Like I said last meeting, my other concern is, the reason they're so interested is because the road isn't in. The value of that property is significantly less than it will be once that road is in. Also echoing Ms. Shirley, you know, we haven't had any discussion about the road lately. How does that tie into the timing? Are there details that are, you know, will they be financially partnering with us on it? I think there's a lot more that we as a council need to understand. And I also echo Ms. Vecchione in that we have an educated population, residents. And I think it's not about the nuances of a developer. It's about what we want to do with this. We will double the size of the city, land wise, housing wise, retail rise, whatever it is we decide to do. And I think it's critical that we offer options and the residents are able to provide their feedback. I have been very clear, very strong and on that desire for a visioning process. And, you know, we're now here. And I will support steps one and two, but I won't support the remainder. So any other council comments, questions?
Yes, I have a question. What would be the cost of this general plan with these folks that you're speaking with?
It, it's the cost, I'm sorry, Ms. Shirley, would you like to answer that?
It's okay. We would have to pay for student travel. So they have these studio classes and they're groups of twenty five students, and they would travel to our city. And they would do focus groups, outreach, they would learn the ins and outs of all, of everything about our city. And so we would pay for their travel, since it's so close, they probably wouldn't need hotel stays unless they're doing outreach or night, you know, maybe night meetings, maybe we pay for their hotel rooms. So we pay for student travel and we would pay for any materials they might need. So, you know, boards, if they're going to, you know, create boards that talk about some different potential things that we want to put into. And and, you know, like, as, you know, Mayor Kerr said, I think it would be great to have their perspective and and introduce those kind of climate policies within our general plan, which we are required to have, and and right now we don't. So, so it would be at most, at most, probably, you know, anywhere from fifteen to maybe fifteen thousand dollars. Like they, the low, you know, they said eight to ten, I think their most expensive one, because the city was far away, was thirty thousand. But certainly less than twenty thousand.
So Pat, what, what we would obviously suggest, so what they do is they take the first semester and they come up, they do all the outreach and 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 obviously connect with the city and gather all the documents. And then the second semester, they actually create the plan.
Establishing the general plan.
So is that going to be all included in thirty thousand dollars?
Yes. Yes.
And then, but, sorry, I'm muting Dennis. Now, there's no, you know, we would need Denise Duffy and David, perhaps, to refine this general plan, of course, right? But these students are being supervised by a professor whose study is in, what is it, Kim? Is it?
The Department of City and Regional Planning, so. Yeah.
And so it's either seniors, um, or, uh, graduate students.
So we're dealing with non-professionals.
Their, um, their professor is an expert, a subject matter expert. Yes.
Can you explain to me why you feel the general plan needs to be done before we can pursue any development of our Fort Door properties?
I, um, that is our, our, uh, our guiding book. And, um, that hasn't been updated since 97. And so there's been, and, and as a city, we have the responsibility to update that general plan. If you look at our surrounding cities, they're, they've been updating their general plan. And so, um, this isn't something that we should do just because there's development that's potential. This is something that we should do because we want to be a responsible city. And so, um, I, I think we can gather a lot of information and, um, and, and create a document that really can guide us it, as we look forward to this change in our city.
I agree, we need to update our general plan, but I don't see why we, that updating the general plan should take precedence over the development of the properties. This development business has been going on for years and years. It's not something we're rushing into. And we need to provide, provide something for, for income for the city in the future years in order to pay our bills and not pile bankruptcy. And that's why I would like to see, um, the, the movement toward the development of the Fort Door properties. Um, not waiting for a year for a general plan update. Uh, this, to me, doesn't make sense.
I think our financial status right now is okay. And I think that we can afford to wait a year to do some good homework, um, to make sure that we're all comfortable moving forward. And so, um, and so that's why I really want to, you know, put a hold on that.
But it's been going on for so long, this development process, it's time that we do something.
Yeah.
The general, the general plan will guide the development. It will also protect the city with, um, uh, requirements that are necessary for the development. And the developers, um, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, the city needs to be the one that leads the horse, not, uh, the developer. I want the city to be as protected as possible and as up to date as possible. Um, and that we have all of our ducks in a row. So, um, we can develop the best, uh, plan possible. So, um, this is much closer than it's ever been. I mean, one of our biggest, uh, strategic objectives is to update the general plan. If we went ahead and developed and, you know, then why even do a general plan?
Because it's important.
Well, so is the general plan. And if we have an opportunity to update it, John?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think, I don't see why these have to be mutually exclusive. I mean, I think that I, I, everyone's making great points. We need development. We, we have to develop that property, but we also have to update the general plan. I like the idea of a senior project with Cal Poly. I'm, I'm a Mustangs, just like Jim, you know? I mean, I, I love that, but look, I mean, I was involved in a lot of senior projects at Cal Poly and, and you get what you pay for, you know? I mean, for 30K, we're going to get, we won't get, I mean, a, a good general plan starts at about $350,000, right? So we, we got to, and we need to basically hire professionals to do that. If we're very, if we're, if, if for all the reasons that we're saying, we've got to update the general plan and we're going to, and we're going to, you know, bolster the city's sanctity and everything with, with the general plan, that's got to be done by a professional. I, I love the fact of bringing in the students and coming in and doing some of maybe the, the, the higher touch items and, and, uh, and giving these students, you know, real world experience. I think that would be great. And, and to me, quite honestly, I think apart from my general fund, that would be a worthy $30,000 investment. And it could fold into anything else that we're going to be doing with the general plan, but I don't think that these are exclusive. I think that what we're being asked tonight is let's interview and let's hear from, and let's put out, let's run this RFP and just see what's out there. And, and we don't have to accept either of these developers, but we can't, we're negotiating against ourselves if we're saying, well, let's just wait, let's just wait, let's wait. That becomes asymptotic. You know, that would, there's always going to be a reason to not move. And I think that let's move and let's just, let's just stay abreast of it. Let's just keep, you know, keep vigilant. And let's, let's hear what these developers have to say, but we don't know what we don't know until we, until we know it. So let's bring them in, let's start, let's start the process. It doesn't cost us anything more than the 17,000 that we're already doing. I think that's a valid process too, is starting to, to poll the, uh, the community and getting, uh, a better understanding of what the, you know, the sentiment of the community is, that we should do, we should just do this. And in fact, I mean, unless, unless, uh, Scott wants to make any comments, I, I move that we accept the, uh, the recommendation for, to move the, the, the five step or the five track plan, um, and kick this off.
This is going to go, it's going to go the way everything.
And we'll need a second.
I second it.
Okay.
All right, Karen, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shirley?
No.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
No. So it passes three to two with, uh, Shirley and Kerr, um, uh, saying no. So let's move on to, uh, item six C, the contract with economic planning and systems. So let's turn it back over to David. Or I'm sorry, Jeff, does this go to you? Or David?
It, it goes to me and then to David.
Okay.
Uh, mayor and council and residents, visitors, this next item is to consider a contract for services with Economic Planning Systems and David Zender that was referenced in the previous item. We're, um, to provide an economic analysis of the undeveloped city-owned properties in the city of, uh, owned by the city of Delray Oaks. The city is currently conducting this developer selection process for the city's former Fort, uh, Fort property. Um, and at the February 2021 Strategic Planning Session, as part of our, uh, future goals to develop the Fort Door property and get to an exclusive negotiating agreement. Uh, part of the request of the council was for information on our city-owned properties and to bring a report, um, prior to, uh, May, uh, or, um, I'm sorry, to, uh, bring a report prior to July, I believe, um, to the council, giving an overview of the economic potential of the city, focusing on economic matters such as, um, what works with cities, cities of our size, what types of commercial residential, um, combinations could exist with all the cities together, um, to make sure that as we move forward in the selection process, that the council has an understanding of, of the potential of the city's properties. Um, the scope for, of the work for this, uh, contract entails not only the economic study, but also the initiation of the public outreach program in that five-step process. That would be development of a survey where, uh, EPS would work in concert with the city to, um, both, um, online and physically mailed to residents. That survey would be developed in a, in a matter to, uh, elicit information. Uh, and it would also educate at the same time. I know there was some concern about, you know, the, the city's education portion of this, but the questions would be, um, asked in an intelligent manner and developed with David Zender and with Denise Duffy, with that in mind, to make sure that we get accurate feedback. Um, the cost of this contract, as stated before, $17,500. Uh, I believe, uh, city attorney Lorca has a comment about the actual contract itself. Since the, the contract is not here, this is just authorizing the, the city to enter into this contract for this cost. But of course it would be at the review of the, uh, city attorney. Yeah, Alex?
Oh, sorry. I did, yeah, basically said what, what my thought was in reading is if the council is so inclined to approve this because we didn't have a copy of the agreement beforehand, uh, I would just ask the maker of the motion to include, you know, review by the city attorney before, uh, Mayor Kerr signed off on, on the contract as per normal.
Good. Is, is there a staff report? Are we just, are we just going to discuss it and then?
No, I think.
I, I gave an overview of the staff report, uh, Councilmember Gagliotti and, and there is a, uh, David, do you have a presentation on the fiscal portion of this? I'm sorry, uh?
I, I mean, uh, the reason I asked is because David was waiting in the wings. He, I think he was going to start this before and so.
It, it, yes, that's correct. It was just, it was two separate act items. I'm sorry.
Right. Okay, that's fine.
I can take you through a very brief, uh, sort of breakout of what's included here. So I'll go ahead and do a show screen. Okay. So economic analysis, really a better name for this would be sort of, um, I would, I would call it an economic, uh, opportunities and constraints analysis. Um, and the, the opportunities and constraints embody more than just the, you know, the, the economics, but also Denise Duffy would play a very important role in characterizing the, uh, limitations or advantages of, of the different city-owned parcels, um, to provide a better idea of what can be done with them. Um, so some of the things that we would, uh, do under this, uh, scope of work is, you know, think about sort of how does the, uh, development of the Fort Door parcel trigger additional retail, um, development? And even beyond that, what currently today are you foregoing in the way of retail in Delray Oaks? Are you experiencing leakage outside to Monterey and Seaside and, and what type? Uh, so we know that that leakage is occurring. The question is, how much can you viably bring back? And does having a somewhat larger resident base in the city, uh, you know, um, provide that opportunity to you? So we've got to go through the process and, and, uh, look at the situation before we can really, um, go further in terms of opining about that. So you have to do the analysis. Um, but, uh, so it'd be, you know, the notion of reclaiming, you know, uh, uh, development that perhaps, uh, went to another place in the region. It would be looking at sort of the future of the Fort Door piece and the other pieces in terms of what other uses can be viably pursued. Uh, we know that there is a significant, um, medical cluster in the neighborhood over in, in just across the street in Monterey. Uh, and so you do see medical office, um, every, every few years you get a, uh, design build, uh, uh, project that emanates out of that medical complex. And then there are industrial prospects. And so, for example, um, various evaluations have been done in the past looking at the city's, um, courtyard and what, what can be done there. And there were ideas around, uh, cannabis testing, for example, and other ideas around in the industrial realm. It was interesting going back, you know, and thinking about sort of the Fort Tag, uh, project and the fact that's, that that's going to be coming through the, um, city's courtyard site or adjacent to it, I should say. And so that may suggest, you know, projects such as that may suggest other possibilities. And so we want to be really open-minded about, you know, all of these possibilities. And, um, you know, we want to think about, uh, not just the economic side, but things like access, configuration, water availability, adjacent uses, um, sensitive habitat, contamination views, appearance, you know, all these things are really important. And this is why it's a multidisciplinary effort between Denise and EPS. And, um, it should be very balanced and, and thoughtful in that regard. So basically we would go through a systematic evaluation, looking at opportunities and constraints of the, uh, the various sites and characterizing their development potential. In some cases, they may have, uh, potential to be developed one in, in one type of use or another, or perhaps there could be a mixed use. Uh, so we'll be looking for that. And then, as mentioned, uh, one of the big reasons we're doing this is to characterize, uh, the results that come out of this effort and, uh, to take input from the city and the citizens in particular. And, uh, basically make sure that, um, this is reflecting the sentiments of the community and, um, responding appropriately. So, um, and then finally, uh, what are the applications for the developer selection process? And that's an internal conversation. That's really sort of what does this mean? Uh, so if the city seems to lean one direction or another, um, perhaps that's something that gets folded into the developer Q and A and, and the review of the developer's qualifications and so forth. Um, so that is the process in a nutshell. Uh, you can see here, it is a very fast-moving, hard-hitting study. We're not spending a lot of time or budget on this. We're, we're, we're going to come in, we're going to look at all of those factors that I just mentioned, uh, quickly in, in the course of about a month. And then we're out. And, uh, basically it's about 12K for EPS, another five for Denise Duffy and Associates. That brings us up to about 17.5 total. And, uh, as mentioned, it would be done very quickly. Uh, so that is pretty much the highlights of the study and I'll stop sharing.
All right. John, would you like to start?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was, it's, it's really, um, it's, uh, I'm drawing a total blank right now. Uh, no, it's, uh, it's Councilmember Shirley's, um, question is that this is 17.5. This is not a far, this, this is the same 17.5 that we talked about last, uh, last council and that we allocated basically in the budget, budget for this kind of work. Um, and this is part of the task two. Is that correct? The, the, this financial analysis includes task two or track two, right? All for 17.5.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to put a, put a dot on that one.
Anything else, John?
No, I think that's good. I'm, I'm happy with this.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Lintel?
Yes, I, I think this is imperative that we have this, uh, study done before we move forward, um, to find out, uh, just history of communities, our size, et cetera. And, um, so I think it's a very good thing. And as, uh, Alex, uh, Lorca suggested, uh, that at, when we see the contract, that it gets reviewed by our city attorney, Alex, um, prior, prior to enacting it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's money well spent. You know, there were some concerns before about, you know, not knowing what should we do with the property? What should, what should go out there? Um, really not having a, a deep understanding of it. I mean, that, that, I can understand that, but what this does is it gives us an idea of each property's potential and what we can do with it. And it involves, it also includes a strong community outreach, which everybody is, everybody on the council is concerned about that. We want that. And it's exactly what you're going to get with a visioning exercise. And that will happen in this, this, this phase right here. So like I said, money well spent.
Okay, Ms. Shirley?
Thank you. Um, I do have some questions, but I, I want to address, um, Councilman Donaldson's, um, characterization of a visioning. I, I don't think that this outreach is a visioning. When I, when I, when I think of visioning, I think of meetings where, um, residents are educated, they're given options. They, um, are spoken, you know, they, they're educated by the experts who do the planning and they, and they look at all the different options and then they talk it through and they figure out what it, what exactly it is they want. My understanding of this outreach, um, is that they, residents would be mailed a survey and they get to check some boxes, write down some things, and then they send it back. Um, that's not visioning. That is doing some public outreach. I'm happy about that. Um, but what I, I want true visioning where you are going out and you're educating and you're helping people understand what are the possibilities that we have for this development? So, um, so although I'm happy about this economic study, it, it doesn't go far enough as to, as to what I. So, um, so although I'm happy about this economic study, it, it doesn't go far enough as to, as to what I'd like. Just a few things. In task one, you mentioned off, in-office prospects, looking at medical offices. I was a little emphasizing that when we have Ryan Ranch right around the corner, it seems like there's medical offices everywhere. Nowhere in this are you talking about housing or affordable housing or how that might work into, you know, some of these studies. So I'd like that to be addressed. In task two, I want to emphasize looking at deed restrictions because I, I do feel like we need to understand if there's any, we now know there's some deed restrictions on Work Memorial Park. I want to know if there's deed restrictions on the RV storage area. That still hasn't been answered. I'm curious how task three is going to be delivered. It just, it states that there's going to be a summary of development potential on sites. Is that something that is going to be, you know, is that a presentation? Is that just a report? How do we get that out to the public? And then again, on task four, when we look at the cost of administrating survey, administering surveys, it says that it's either going to be, I think, let's see. Well, I'm, I'm just wondering who's going to do the surveys? I've heard from Acting City Manager Jeff Hoin that the city is going to be sending out the surveys. So I guess I'm wondering who's doing that? Who's doing the data analysis that comes back? Because I think that's a skill in and of itself as well, in addition to just writing a survey is, is obviously a skill. So, um, and then again, you mentioned that this is going to be a quick process, right? A month. That, that seems really fast for community outreach. So I'm a little, I'm a little worried about that. And then at the end, again, I, I really want presentations done and, and given to the public. So we're all aware of, of, of what the study is. And I do think that the study is going to be answering some important questions. I'm not a developer. I want to know what our options are. So, um, you know, do we hold on to the land? Do we sell the land? Does it make sense to build certain things over others? Those are all the things I want to know. So if this study is going to tell me some of that, I'm happy about it. But I, you know, still some reservations in that. So I'm, I, you know, I think we, we should see the contract for sure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I had a couple of questions. Actually, I like the, you know, the inclusion of housing. I'd also, you know, David, how do you calculate natural capital? Do you calculate natural capital?
Can you clarify your question?
Well, the value of green space. So that would be nice to have. There is a, there is a value to just having parkland and things like that. And so I'm wondering if that's going to be in it. And obviously, it's not going to be an economic driver for the city, but it's also a, what makes our city worth coming to live in? You know, we have nice green space and we all enjoy that. And so I think to attract other people, it would be nice to have that included. Housing. And David, how do you calculate? The world is changing quickly because of the pandemic and, and because of a new president. How are you factoring those dynamics in? I mean, and we heard this evening about sales tax and how retail is, is, you know, kind of vanishing. Not vanishing, but slowing down. How do you have tools to be able to anticipate pandemic, you know, post-pandemic financial issues and, and directions?
So this is something as a firm that we are totally ensconced with. We're, we're very much in the middle of that question. I, I gave a presentation to the National Land Economics Honor Society, LAI, along with my, a couple of my counterparts. And we've gone through and we've looked at various, pretty much all across the board, land uses in terms of, of how they may respond in the post-COVID environment. And so that is, that is very much on our minds. The answers are still being formulated. It's very much a moving picture, but as you can imagine, we are very much in the middle of that, that challenge. So you can bet that we'll be thinking about that. And actually, it, your two questions are really the same question in effect. Because from all available evidence, it seems that communities that are able to best integrate open space and architectural styles, for example, that that are integrated with the outdoors and, and create safe places, those are all critical right now. So you can see that, that there are many cities that are really redoing their, their infill projects and they're, they're thinking along with the development community of how, how do they best recognize these consumer sentiments and build in something that will actually give you a competitive advantage? So I think you're actually in a really good position right now to, and, and the developers that we're talking with are very much on top of this. Both of them. And so they're, they're not strangers to this discussion. They're going to be able to respond to questions like this. But these are all really imperative, you know, considerations, very, very important. And we'll be ensuring that, that those are built in to the analysis, you know, from top to bottom.
Okay. And of course, you're also adding in climate factors and issues of wildfire.
Well, these days, everything has to be as efficient as it can be. So whatever technology can bring us to reduce our water consumption is imperative. You know, and there's always a cost to technology and so forth. So we have to find that optimal point where things are feasible, but also beneficial.
Okay. And on task two, John, I'll get to you after I'm done, unless, okay. Task two, I'm wondering why Work Memorial isn't included in this? It was in the housing element. And I think for all of us, it would be helpful to understand the constraints on that as well. Obviously, you know, there are deed restrictions. But I think it would be good, you know, from the city perspective, I consider this a foundational document, right? That we can use for a while. And so would you consider putting Work Memorial into that as well?
Whatever city staff and leadership feels is, is the appropriate grouping of properties. I think the intent was to include all city-owned properties. So I think that's, that's, that's the way we've been approaching it.
Okay, well, Work Memorial is, is city-owned. I would like to see that added. And then task three, the summary of the development potential. Like we spoke last time, I would like to see options where the city retains ownership, if possible, of perhaps sections, not necessarily the entire thing. Pandemic forecasts based on education. And then, yeah, the public presentation. I also want to have an understanding about, you know, is there a presentation? Or is there just the, the survey? Perhaps Jeff could answer that?
Mayor, I believe that this will be presented, the, the action or the strategic objective was to present to city council the, the, the study. So there will be a presentation and overview of it at a city council meeting as, when it's done. Originally, this was projected, I'm sorry, I haven't spoken the date. It was projected for this month. However, we had to bring it to council for consideration. It'll probably be around June because that gives us more than a 30-day tight, tight timeline. And that'll be adjusted on the strategic objective list. So it'll be June and not July.
Great, great. Thank you. And then lastly, task five, internal. Who is included in that?
It can be defined any way that you'd like. Internal can be, be staff, could be staff plus whomever. I would follow the city manager's guidance on that.
Okay. I, I think it's critical that the council is, is part of that. So as we make those decisions. So that is, those are my questions, but I'm excited about having this, this document with all the information in one place. So, John?
There we go. I, yeah, what Councilmember Shirley actually said earlier too, it jogged my memory of something that we talked about at FORA with, with Councilman, or was it John Wizard, around deed restrictions? And that was if, if we could say have an affordable housing unit. And we also talked with PK Difanbaugh about, with this is there is a way, and I, and none of us could figure, none of us knew exactly, but we'd heard of it elsewhere. And I'd love for if you guys could spend a little time finding it, is that a jurisdiction can actually put a deed restriction on it that, that precedences or, I forgot the term, but basically says Monterey Unified School District gets preference, teachers or staff for, for a particular block of houses. And, and of course, that charged or, or block of rental units or something, something of that nature. I would love to know if that's a reality. Councilmember Wizard felt it was, he'd heard of it. We got all excited about it and then it never went anywhere after that because FORA blew up. So, so we'd like to do that. I mean, I, I would personally like to do that. I would love to go back to PK and say, you know what? We've got this, we've got this land, we're developing it and Monterey Unified School District is very, very important to us. And we want you to be able to hire the best and the brightest and be able to get them to afford to stay to live here. And Delray Oaks has a pool of houses, you know, set aside just for, just for those people. I'd love to know if that's a reality.
So, so are you talking about providing some kind of housing for the missing middle?
I don't know what that is. There's a lot of jargon that's been thrown around tonight that I'm, that I'm just trying to follow as we're going, but.
So the missing middle is, would be teachers, right? They're not low-income teacher, firefighters, that kind of thing. That's what the missing middle means.
Yeah. And I think, I think that that's been, quite honestly, one of our more critical. We've not been talking about that. You hear a lot about very, very low income and, and low-income housing. But the, I mean, our teachers, we need teachers, we need police, we need firemen, we need, you know, we, we restorateurs, we need people who are living here.
And seniors.
Yeah. And it's seniors. Most of, most of the seniors I know own their own homes. But in any case, yeah, in any case, I, I think it would be nice to know if that's a reality. If this, if a jurisdiction has the wherewithal to deed restrict to a specific block, specifically a school district. And the school district seemed to be the nexus. It seemed to be, you, you can't do that with, with a private, a private entity. But because it is a school district, you can, you can then create that nexus. I'd love to know if that, if that's a possibility. If, if it's, if it's going to be, you know, if it's going to cost a lot of money, then, then we can maybe push it off, you know, to, to have someone else do it. But if it's something that could be done pretty rather quickly, it'd be great if, if you could add it to the scope. I'm the worst client right now because this whole, this whole exchange has been Scope creep, Scope root, Scope creek. But I think some of these are pretty good ideas, so.
But, but perhaps as we're adding different items, perhaps we could, you know, an up to amount for the contract.
Yeah, I mean, they've got seventeen-five to work with.
Right.
And, and it seems like the heavy lift is going to be in, in the 12,000, in the 69% of this thing. So, you know.
Maybe we do, you know, obviously, the contract needs to be created, reviewed. And Jeff, take a look at it. The other thing we could do is we're going to be doing a special meeting for for the city manager hiring.
Yeah, and add it as an agenda.
And we could just add it to review the contract. And, and we could, you know, I don't know, look at the budget and go up to 25,000 or something to ensure.
I'm sorry, not, but is that, will the, will the scope and the budget, or not the scope and the budget, but the scope and the contract be ready by next week? Because I think that's when, it's next Wednesday that we're.
Yeah, I think it's next Thursday.
Next Thursday was it?
No problem.
No problem.
Good. So, so, great. I'm sorry, John, you were on a roll.
That was, no, 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 I think we were, that we were working very well together on that. I think that's great. Those, that was my comment. It was, and it was, it was something that, you know, Councilmember Shirley jogged in my memory. And I, if we've got this opportunity to look into it, I would love it to do that. Having a pro look into this would be great.
So before I go out to the public, actually, why don't we go out to the public? Are we all through with the council questions for now? Okay, so let's go out to the public. Louise, you've had your hand up for an awfully long time.
I think that this is a great thing. And I think it's something long overdue. And I see this as being very helpful, not only in, I don't want to say not only, I think it's in addition to the development of the properties or not, but I see this as a great step forward towards the updating of the general plan. Because once we have the deed, you know, once we know what restrictions there are or aren't on the properties, once we know what the technical, technological restrictions or advantages are of some of the properties, once we know what the economic impact is of various uses of the properties, that is something that you really need to have to do a really good general plan going forward. So I would say that this is a spectacular way to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. I thought I saw another hand. Bill Cronin.
Good evening, Mayor. Bill Rexdale, Cronin, 58, Carlton Drive. I, I like the idea of doing this economic plan. I do have one question, I suppose, is does it look at the economic, the long-term economic feasibility to the city? One only has to go back to the debacle of Monterey Downs, City of Seaside. There was a report out that was widely publicized that it was a net loss of money to Seaside's budget to build the Monterey Downs project. But they steamrolled ahead, full speed ahead, until one councilman finally said, whoa, wait a minute, put the brakes on the thing. So I think having a feasibility study and all these other things is, it's great. I love it. I want to see that. But I also want to know is if, once we develop this property, is it going to be a net asset to the city or a net loss to the city? And if it's a net loss, I think we just need to stay away from it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Louise, do you have your hand up again? Okay. Mr. Alian. You're muted.
The economic analysis is absolutely fantastic, essential. And a lot of the questions, by the way, I didn't want to downplay the intelligence of anybody in Delray Oaks. I'm just saying that having been through this a couple of times previously, I know that it's extremely difficult. It's the council that represents the citizens of Delray Oaks. So the council has got the burden of trying to get input from people. You're going to get a lot of input as you go through that process. You know, we, we had many meetings where the public was invited when Infantino was making his presentation. So there was a lot of public input at the time. There will be a lot of in, public input. I think the, the thing that you're going to find as you go through the economic analysis and work with these developers, these, these people will be more than willing and very interested in working with the city to find out, get the, obtain the citizen input and make sure that we're going to do this project right. Ultimately, it's the city council that has to make the decisions and approve how things go forward. But you're going to do that with the input from a lot of citizens. So happy that you're thinking about this economic analysis. I agree with everybody else. It's essential. Bill is absolutely right. If this thing doesn't pencil out economically, then we just shouldn't do it. But we've got that property over there. It is extremely valuable. We've got it to be able to do something with it. But we've got that property over there. It is extremely valuable. We've got it to be able to do something with it. And don't forget, we still have a debt to pay off. Thank you very much.
I'm very clear, we have a debt. Um, uh, Mr. Waltz. Excuse me, Dr. Waltz. You're muted.
I just want to validate two things that are said. I'm not sure whether a deep understanding of deed restrictions from the past is part of the scope of the economic analysis or not. People smarter than me can make that decision. But I want to validate, um, what Councilperson Shirley said, which is that a deep understanding of those deed requirements, especially because of the complexities of fora, is a really smart thing for the city to do, a really smart thing. So I absolutely underscore that. Also, what, uh, Councilperson Gagliotti said, I want to affirm that. I often talk about FORTAG, but my field of expertise is education and public education. And there's a teacher shortage in California. We are shortening the requirements at the university to make sure we can get teachers out there. Other areas are offering fantastic bonuses on some occasions to draw teachers. So I want to add to what John noted that I also think it may be, uh, very smart to create the opportunity to have housing for what you're calling the missing middle, uh, teachers, firefighters, et cetera, especially teachers. Um, but also because it would, it it may in fact allow Monterey Peninsula Unified to to draw a stronger teacher force. In fact, um, I I know of a couple of different districts and I thought maybe even Monterey Unified was one of them. They're looking themselves to invest in subsidized housing. So it's a very real need that we have to meet the teacher, teacher shortage and having those folks in Delray Oak seems like a a very fine fit. So I want to, I want to validate what, uh, John said.
Great, thank you. And and we have a lot of educators in town already, so, um, having more would be even better. Um, any other public comments? All right, let's bring, uh, Mr. Clark.
There we go. Hi, uh, council, um. One thing I would, as a observer of this, say, Councilwoman Shirley talks about educating the, uh, the people out in Delray Oaks. And there's a certain amount of us that are gonna get some of it and certain amount that aren't. But here's, here's the core thing. What does that look like, Councilwoman Shirley? What would that look like? How long would it be? What type of depth would you get into? How many of those would you have to take until you were satisfied? In other words, maybe it behaves you to take it upon yourself to say, here's how I think that would look. It would be three major points. It would be offered in a forty-five minute session. In fact, let's just record it the first time. So it goes on the website and then any citizen that's actually interested in it could go to the website and just play it back and you give it a deadline of, you know, thirty days. Hey, everybody, you got thirty days to look at this and have your input. Because we have a real, uh, disease going on right now in that we don't have stop points. We don't have, hey, it's gotta be done by here. Hey, it's gotta be done by there. Hey, it's gotta be done by there. And you just take the best, uh, what you got at that time. That's one subject. The other is on this, um, uh, housing thing. I actually called and talked to the city of Monterey about their affordable housing that they did across the street from the airport. And also there's another property I didn't know they own. And the city of Monterey is big enough that they have a staff that handles that, which of course will never be able to do. And then I guess the county of Monterey has some also. So this isn't something we have to create from scratch. This is something where we can take somebody to lunch and learn a whole bunch and get a big jump on it, um, if we indeed want to investigate that. Um, and it's, it's a wonderful idea, but of course with everything else, there comes, uh, uh, costs along with making that happen for people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment? Okay, let's go, uh, we're gonna close public comment and come back to the council. So, um, of, let's start with Pat.
Uh, I would like to make a motion that, um, the new business under item six C, uh, to consider the contract with economic planning, et cetera, for a fee of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars be, um, done. And the contract would be with the approval of the city, acting city manager and also the, uh, city attorney.
I second it, but can I, can I, uh, ask for a friendly amendment? And and that is to, uh, to include all the, all that scope creep that we were, uh, basically kind of putting in there. I'd love, I'd love for all those, all those notes to be included in that scope or at least, uh, quantified and let us know what's, what we can and can't have. If you'll, if you'd be so kind to oblige.
Uh, I would also like to add a friendly amendment to, um, uh, I don't know if the right word is tabling it to the special meeting next Thursday so we can take a look at the contract.
Well, wait, that's, that's, oh. I mean, the, the motion on, the motion on the floor right now is to approve, right? And and you would, um, you're asking to not approve it, but to delay the approval. Is that correct?
Well, that we would come back and take a look at the contract next Thursday with the different items. A, um, I'd like to see the contract. And we talked about just moving it.
Did I need, but does, but but does, um, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of open to this, but but I guess I want to ask Jeff and Alex. Do you need authorization to move forward before? I mean, is there, is there something that's gating tonight that you need, uh, tonight's approval to be able to deliver something on Thursday? Jeff or Alex?
From my perspective, if I got the, the contract in the next couple of days, I would, I would have time ahead of the meeting to review it and work with Mr. Zender if there were any modifications that would be in the city's best interest. Jeff, do you have?
Uh, you know, the only thing, as I was following the conversation, we, you know, we talked about approving it. With the add-ons, with a possible, uh, hire not to exceed, we would draw the contract, review it at the special city council meeting and then approve the contract as written with the add-ins on that not to exceed. That was my understanding of the, the, the possible path that council was looking at.
And through the mayor, if I might, uh, to the mayor's point, um, you know, what we could do is just continue this item until, until next, until the special meeting on Thursday, um, if it was the pleasure of the council.
That, well, I mean, I don't, if I might, also through the mayor, um, the, I guess what I'm asking is that do you, does staff need approval in order to move forward or can staff work without approval? And then, and then we, and then once we see the final product, project, product, product, sorry, um, we can then all prove that.
Right.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely work with Mr. Zender to get the contract drawn up, insert the additional language and then present to you the final package at this, at the special meeting next Thursday.
Okay, so that.
So.
I don't, I don't see us being particularly held up if that's the, the pleasure of the council. We could move forward with just sort of, um, bringing the final package.
Okay, then, uh, I guess it goes back to council, well, it goes back to council member Lintel because it was her, um, and I, I seconded it, so, so.
My question is, is do we need to vote on it to move it forward to Thursday?
Uh, that's a good question.
Alex?
We don't. We can, we can continue this item with the direction to staff, um, to further prepare that.
Okay, well, um, but, uh, Councilmember Lintel would have to withdraw her, her motion, that's correct.
That's correct.
So.
I, I withdraw and, uh, uh, vote for, um, continuing it at the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Just one thing, Mayor, you, do we need to ask David's input to see if there's any issues on his end with what we just discussed? Yes.
Absolutely. David, any, um, did you write copious notes? Would you like some input with, or did Jeff and, and, I mean, we have the recording.
Yeah, I've been taking copious notes.
Okay.
And I've, I've captured everything. I do have a question on timing. Um, Alex, you used the term next Thursday. So, Thursday, the sixth of May.
We have a special meeting set for, for, for the sixth and and the hope would be to have everything ready for that.
Okay, just want to make sure it wasn't this Thursday.
But David, that timing works for you.
Yeah, so I'm gonna need, uh, probably some time this week to get the scope, um, ironed out and make sure it includes everything. Uh, and I certainly picked up on all the themes, so I feel good about that.
And 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 we can discuss if there's additional costs or things like that next Thursday.
Yes.
Contract, okay. Great.
This, as David pointed out, it's not next Thursday, it's May sixth.
Excuse me, a week, a week from Thursday, or we, yeah, a week from Thursday.
So Madam Mayor, if technically I think we, we, we could do a roll call vote on the, on the motion to continue today.
And John, did you second?
I seconded, uh, your, well, now I'm confused. Okay, I seconded, uh, Councilmember Lintel's motion.
Motion to continue.
Oh, oh, then I, okay, motion to continue, then I, I second that, yes.
Okay, all right. Karen, could you, could you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye, so it passes unanimously. Great conversation, thank you. Um, so we'll move on to six E, Consider Integral Innovation, Inc., Lease Termination for Public Works Building. Mr. Hoyn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and residents. Um, and just so I know, since I can't see everybody on here and some don't have all names, I am wondering if there is a representative from Integral Innovations here today for this item.
I don't see anyone.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Council, this is another item for action and it is concerning, uh, consider revising the public works property leased between the city of Delray Oaks and Integral Innovations to provide economic relief for the business during the COVID nineteen pandemic-related economic downturn. I will, uh, first point out that, uh, Integral Innovations did draft a letter requesting, uh, this assistance. Uh, it did not get in the packet. It was delivered to council and posted in public at city hall, uh, when it was delivered to council and available for public review. Just a little bit of background, Integral Innovations has been an economic partner with the city of Delray Oaks since twenty seventeen. They were one of the first cannabis-related businesses after our, uh, dispensary to, uh, partner with the city. Since that time, the business has contributed sales tax, rent and other fees totaling almost a million dollars for the city of Delray Oaks General Fund. In early twenty nineteen, the business was expanding rapidly and they needed additional workspace. And at that point in time, there was not very much rental space for business within the city of Delray Oaks. We then worked on a, uh, lease agreement to partner with, uh, Integral Innovations where they leased our public works building and part of our public works yard in, starting in, uh, June of twenty nineteen. In late twenty nineteen, Integral Innovations, uh, was negatively impacted, uh, if you may recall, by the vaping medical crisis where, uh, they were attributing some possible serious respiratory illnesses to vaping. Uh, that impacted a large portion of their business and their product line and, uh, forced their, their sales to reduce quite drastically. Uh, then in April of twenty twenty, um, the city, uh, approved a four-month deferral of any rent payments with the possibility of extending the deferral longer if necessary due to the COVID pandemic. Since that time, they have been struggling to stay in business. They have laid off the majority of their staff and they have deferred tax payments and also, um, not made any of the original lease payments. I will add that they did pay two months of rent at the beginning of the lease, uh, and they did assist, uh, the city in acquiring a, uh, storage uh, shed for, uh, police department equipment and in, and city files. However, that was not a part of the lease. That was so that the city could move out of this, the, uh, public works building, which the police department partially, uh, occupied with, with their, uh, um, equipment items. Uh, in early twenty twenty-one, we reached out to Integral Innovations to discuss their financial situation and the status of the lease. We requested that they determine their financial ability to continue in that lease and or catch up with rent payments. Uh, additionally, if it wasn't feasible to do so, we asked them to, uh, prepare a request, uh, if they wanted to end that lease and come up with some sort of, uh, lease amendment and a, uh, at least a partial reparation of the late rent payments. The letter that they sent, uh, as the council knows and is posted here at city hall, uh, they have offered to pay a city a reduced rent, uh, the city, a reduced rent of about one thousand dollars a month for a total of twelve thousand dollars for the length of the lease. And while they are still struggling, they would like to begin, uh, making those payments, I believe in July of twenty twenty-one through June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, the city would then regain control of the public's, uh, public works properly immediately upon the, the execution of the lease. Now, the economic impact of this is a reduction of rental income to the city of thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, keep in mind that we will be recovering part of the rent. We are trying to help one of our, uh, cities' businesses, uh, stay in business and be successful and hopefully recoup, uh, deferred, uh, sales tax to the amount of, of over a quarter of a million dollars. And if we can assist them in doing this through this agreement, if the council, uh, approves, uh, it would help them out and provide them relief and hopefully keep them on their feet. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, okay. So, um, let's start with Pat.
Um, I, I think, uh, we would like to keep them in the community and, uh, help them through their hard times. And so I, I think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Yeah, um, I mean, we, we started to cross this bridge a year ago. Um, I, I agree with probably everyone on the councils. We want to, we want to keep, uh, we want to keep tenants and we want to keep our businesses. But, uh, I believe also in trust but verify and or or at least have some kind of collateral. Uh, what I would like to see is an amendment to their offer i- in our counter would be, uh, I'd like them to audit all the equipment that they have in there and then, and then have them attach a letter that if they completely default, if they just walk away, um, we have a lien for the value of, of all the equipment that they basically got in there. I mean, we have to do something. We, we've lost thirty-six thousand dollars over the year and we've deferred, well, and we've deferred it. But but now that's in, in my mind, a loss. And and yeah, there's a potential of three hundred thousand dollars, but that's only on the case i- if, if they, if they're around. If they walk, then we're not only out the three hundred thousand dollars, which we probably weren't gonna get, and and we're also out thirty-six thousand dollars. We're probably even out twelve thousand dollars. The, the point is, is that a year ago, we probably should have collateralized the deal, but we felt that they were gonna be pretty sound, pretty strong and, uh, and and we took a risk on them. Here we are a year later and we're still hearing that they've got problems, they've got, you know, issues that they're, they're trying to work through. I, I want to be accommodating, but I also want to be, I, I want to go back to where we were before, is that, to me, it's very clear that we can be in the extreme case. You know, a year ago, we didn't think we could be in the extreme case. Now we know we can be in the extreme case. So I would like, I would like an amendment to this or their offer that we get a full audit and and we collateralize their, that entire, the entire value, the three hundred and, the three hundred thousand dollars in, in deferred tax or lost tax revenue and the, and the, uh, full forty-eight thousand dollars.
So I just want to make sure we're just talking about the, uh, lease this evening. Alex?
I know, exactly.
Okay, um, and and I also just wanted to offer to you, I mean, I have some questions too for Alex as far as gift of funds and all of that kind of stuff. But, um, you know, this, it, it, A, there's a couple of things. One is, we made the promise that we would come back after four months and review this. And we didn't, right? So that's one ding. Um, but the positive thing is we have this three hundred and eleven thousand dollars for, um, for, uh, recovery. And, um, this, in my opinion, you know, obviously waiting upon Alex, we could, um, you, we could use thirty-six thousand dollars of that. you, we could use $36,000 of that as a COVID, you know, calamity. Right? So there is money that can cover that 36,000. Now, your 250 is a completely different story that we can't really talk about tonight. But, um, you know, so my question, if you guys don't mind me kind of skipping line, Alex, is there any issue with gift of funds with what is being proposed?
I don't see that there is one. For gift of public funds, it really just has to be a wholesale gift. In this circumstance, the city would be, this, this agreement would obviate the need to go to court perhaps and spend attorney's fees to collect back rent and that type of thing. The tenant has made improvements to the property. The agreement calls for the city to pick and choose the improvements it wishes to keep. So to my mind, there's not an issue with gift of public funds.
Great.
If I may, Mayor, I, I mean, I like that idea. It, it, it definitely serves our, our cash flow issue.
Yes.
Right, right. It serves, and, and that I agree with, but I still want to have a little more teeth in this, in this accommodation. I mean, we continue to keep accommodating and accommodating, accommodating, and yet there's nothing there to, you know, as, as recourse, you know, and so I, I would like to see some collateral. I asked for collateral a year ago and we didn't get, we, we didn't feel we needed it. I think now, I'm convinced that we, we potentially need it. So I would like to see the collateral of, I'd like to see them collateralize basically all the hardware in, in their space. And at least audit, you know, at least tell us what's there. But I like, I mean, I, I like your idea too, Mayor. I mean, that's, I think that's a, that's a great way to kind of, yeah, right.
I mean, I think we can do both based, you know, I mean, they do have the 250K and, you know, and then the 36. I also think that we kind of dropped the ball on that. And so, but.
You know, on that, you know, we, 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 there's, there's some other, there's some other transactions that we've done where we've done. But frankly, it's not, the, the, the tenant is always responsible for, for meeting the contract. It's not the, it's not the landlord that has to continue to keep riding the tenant. It, it, the tenant is, is on that, so whether we drop the ball or not, the tenant should have been knocking on our doors five or four months later saying, hey, you know, rather than just staying quiet. So, yeah.
So let's go out to Scott, do you have any, anything?
Yeah, I mean, this is a, a tough situation because there's really, I mean, when you look at it, I mean, there's not much you can do. The bottom line is, the city took a risk on a small company that paid off for a while until it didn't, and that's all part of business. And, you know, I've spoken with their CEO and they're trying to do all that they can to get back up on their feet, and, you know, it becomes a consideration of, you know, how much do we push them to get either by using collateral or any other method to make sure that they pay up what they owe us, realizing that they might not even be around. And it, it, or if they, they are around, will they have the capacity to even pay us back? So that's, it, it's very concerning to me that our largest cannabis company is in this situation. And if you look back before we had cannabis and you look at our financial situation in the city, it's, it's, it would be almost exactly the same. And I, I'll just tell you, I know that folks have said, hey, our budget's fine, we're in great shape and all of that. Okay, yeah, you can look at some of the grant money that we've been getting in and that's been helpful. And, you know, there's, there's money from, from Fora that we've received. But when you look at our core businesses in the city and what's happening to our number one cannabis-producing income for our city, it's very, very concerning. And, and we're just, we're just in a fix. I mean, bottom line is, we took a risk. Business is risky and it, it worked out until it didn't. And, and I'm not sure if, if we're really, you know, in a position that would make us comfortable.
That's a.
Do you, do you have a suggestion, Scott?
I mean, given the fact that they're trying their best and it's a matter of, hey, how much do you want to squeeze them? At least, you know, we're getting something that's agreed upon with the city that, hey, it's $11,000. It's a lot less than what we, we would have liked. But, you know, they've looked at their situation, we've, you know, obviously given them our rationale and, you know, they know what, what the, what the lease said and what they owe us. And they've come back and said, hey, this is all I can do. I mean, it's no different in a lot of ways than what you have with landlords and tenants that's going on during COVID. I mean, there's, i- in situations, if, if, if a tenant can't pay, then, hey, they can't pay. And, you, you know, they've come back to us and said, we can pay this amount. And really, I, I think that's all we're going to get. And once again, it, it, it is what it is, but when I go back and look at this situation that's happening to the city and I don't see any other businesses out there, and I see this happening to our number one cannabis revenue producer, it, it really is concerning.
I have a que, I have a comment.
Okay, can we, can we just go to Kim?
Yeah.
So we hear all these, okay.
Can I ask Acting City Manager Hoine, do you know if they have equipment in there? Do, do you understand what they, that they actually have in that storage area?
There's, I, I believe what Councilmember Gagliotti is talking about their main business. There is no equipment for production or distribution in the storage or, or in the public works building right now. I believe what Councilmember Gagliotti is talking about their, their main production facility here in the city.
I see, I see, okay. Well, if they, okay, all right. Um, you know, I appreciate your work in trying to work this out, Acting City Manager, so I, I don't have any additional questions or thoughts. I mean, I, you know, we're going to get what we can from them, and, you know, they're still trying to do business. And so I, I feel like we, you know, I, I just want to be a good partner still, I guess, and maybe I'm too trusting, but I'm willing to just go with the 12,000 and, and we'll work from there.
I also want to reiterate that we have a variety of cannabis companies. Everything from like a Walmart production to a Tiffany's, and they are a high-end product. So during this time, you know, when everybody's struggling economically or many, many, many people are struggling economically, right, cannabis is, is a vice, right? And so if you're going to, if you, if you need the medicine or if you need, you know, the cannabis, I would think that at this time, you know, I would be curious as to how our other companies are doing. You know, are people literally just trimming their, their wallets and they're not buying the high-end product? Right? And so hopefully that will go back up at some time soon, but, um, you know, I just wanted to, you know, offer that. So if you guys don't mind, I'd like to go out to the public. Louise has her.
No, I had, I had a comment that I wanted to. It was, it's, it's on kind of Scott's, Scott's point, and that is, I would totally agree if we were a free enterprise that we took a risk, you know, and the risk didn't pay off and we're at a loss. The, the issue is, is that in a free, in a free enterprise, it's the, it's the entity that takes that risk and, and, and it's those monies that, that they're putting at risk. The, what we're talking about is tax dollars. We're talking about, they've already collected this money.
No, no, we're not talking about tax dollars, John.
I know, the lease, the lease is one thing, but, but we, there is defer.
We, yeah, we can't talk about the tax dollars. It's not on the agenda.
Understand.
I'm sorry.
No, I, and I, and I totally understand and I appreciate that, and I think.
And maybe that, maybe we agendize that for next time.
I would, I would, I would appreciate that, but I think that it is, because it is, it's the, it's the entire breadth of the organization. And, and if we're going to take this risk, but we're only going to look at it from, it's only a 40 or $36,000 risk, that's not truly assessing what the risk here is, right? The, the law.
Should we table this as well? Or, uh, not table, but move, I mean, really, the argument you're making makes sense.
Yeah.
Right? You know, we're talking about one piece, but.
Yeah, we are, we are, we are talking, we're talking about one piece, and I think that there's, there's a larger, there, there's a larger kind of response that the city needs to make. And it's really, it's, it's to Scott's point, is that we are taking a risk. We're taking a flyer on a, on one of our, on one of our, one of our industries here.
So let's go out to the public and then we can come back and hammer this out. Um, Louise?
Yeah, excuse me. I did not get, did not realize and did not have an opportunity to, to see the offer that was submitted by Integral Innovations, Innovations. So I'm going based on what Jeff read, and I'm a bit confused because I, I believe he, excuse me, I believe he read that they, they offered to pay $1,000 a month starting this coming June through next year, July through next year. And then, I'm not clear when they would vacate that building. Does the building come back to us now? As soon as we sign this agreement?
Yes.
And then we, then we, the city has a potential option of finding somebody else who might need it for some reason? Okay.
It's part of our economic development plan that we just.
Yeah, but I, I'm talking about immediate use of that building, not down the road or that area down the road. So the way it was read, it was kind of confusing because he said at the end of the 12 months, they would give the building back to us. That means they'd have it for another year without paying rent on it.
Right.
For clarification, no. The, the statement is, they'll start making the payments for back rent starting in July. And when the lease is executed, which means when it's signed.
You mean the amendment?
Yes, the amended lease.
Okay, okay.
And the building would, then the building would come back to the city. So that would be immediately. And, and I do believe their original lease is actually up in a couple of months anyway. So they, they won't have the building, this would just shorten it a couple of months, save them that money and recoup some of the costs for the city.
Thank you.
Um, Alex, did you have something?
I, I was just gonna mention that another thing that the city, you know, would gain by this is earlier possession as of the effective date of the agreement, which I believe is May 1.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to bring her back to the council. So we have a couple of options. We can either approve this, disapprove this, or I personally like the idea of having a larger conversation.
Yeah, me too.
And, and, and moving it to whether it's next month or, I mean, the next month makes the most sense just because of the timing. John?
Yeah, I mean, I, I asked staff, again, just similar to a lot, that one of the last items, is that, is there anything that we would make now that, that prevents you from making any decisions or, or hinders your, your actions that you need to take by us booting it?
No, not from my perspective, Councilmember Gagliotti. I think we, we can continue the dialogue. We'll certainly convey that, that, you know, at this point, the city hasn't accepted the, the agreement, but that it would just be, you know, we would let them know that it would be reconsidered.
Yeah, okay. I, I like, I like the mayor's idea of having a broader conversation and having a little more time to maybe even dig into some of the details, because I, I, I'll be honest, but I only read the letter and I read the packet, and that's it. That's all I know about any of this. I don't know any of the history. I don't have, I don't have any of the relationships. I don't know any.
John, if I could clarify, so when you're talking about the lien on collateral, is that just for the lease or are you talking for the tax money that's, that they owe?
That, that would be a point that we would have to take up in that further conversation. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, we cannot talk about the.
I can't answer that question right now. Yeah.
It's not on the agenda.
Be, because if it's, if the item before us is to collateralize their, their, the, the lease, then, you know, I look at that, they've got millions of dollars of equipment in there. Well, maybe not millions, but at least hundreds of thousands of dollars. To, to put that collateral up against a lease that we're talking is $36,000 from a legal standpoint, I, I would think that we would have some difficulties there. Particularly given the fact that maybe we haven't done due diligence in enforcing the lease.
These are all great points to bring up. I mean, I think we should bring them up. Yeah, I agree. I mean, these are excellent points.
Kim or Pat? Any?
I'm fine with, no, I'm fine with tabling this and, and having it be part of a larger discussion.
I, I don't see any reason to postpone tabling. I, I, I agree with Kim that having a greater discussion and tabling it for one month is acceptable.
So what I'd like to do is, is make a motion to continue this item until mon, next month to include a larger conversation about the deferred sales tax.
A second.
Okay. Karen, can you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
I, I have one question before I respond to this. Allison, are you referring to the city council meeting of next month or?
Yes.
They make the special meeting?
No, the end of May. Thank, thank you for that question.
Okay, aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye, so it passes unanimously. All right, another good conversation. Great, so we're going to move on to new business, item 6F, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Placing the Invocation Back on the Agenda. I'll turn this over to, is it Vice Mayor or Mr. Gagliotti?
Well, I, I mean, I can start. I think Pat and I both feel the same thing. I'm not a religious person. I'll be, I'm, I'm a recovering Catholic. So, but I, I don't, I don't discount others' beliefs, and people are very strong, and people are very strong about, about the invocation. In fact, Mayor, when you first came in, you actually had Mayor Carbone, who is, I believe she's
American.
Oh, alone, or, or.
Poloney.
Yeah, exactly. And so, you know, I mean, I, I like the idea of having an invocation. Again, I am not religious. But I, I appreciate other people's beliefs, and, and I, I have no problem with someone coming in and celebrating that belief and, and feeling that they're, you know, they're blessing our the, our, our process and everything. I, I think it's fine. I think it's, I don't think that it, it, it threatens the First Amendment, you know, or, or, you know, a separation of church and state, and, and I, I think it's, it's absolutely fine. And it's, and frankly, it's sometimes just a nice way to just set the tone, you know? If somebody comes in and just says nice things before we get, we start throwing food at each other, I think that that's kind of a good, you know, and it can temper the evening. So I, I'm, I'm in fan of bringing back the, bringing back the invocation. And i- i- if it makes, if it makes anybody else more comfortable, it doesn't have to be, it can be a non-denominational invocation. And I kind of like the idea of having different, you know, it'd be nice to have someone from the Shinto, you know, the, the place there in Seaside that my neighbors go to, you know, the, it'd be nice to have somebody come in and, and give us a blessing from, from them. So, so I, I like the idea of having the, the invocation. It was, it was a nice add, and it's, it's traditional. It's been here ever since I've been around, so.
Ms. Lintel, anything additional?
We previously had the salute to the flag and an invocation at the start of our city council meetings. I do not know why or the justification for removing both of them. Then the salute to the flag returned to our city council, but not the invocation. Our government of the United States starts out their meetings with an invocation and we, we're fortunate to have a church in our community. And I would like to see the return of the invocation at all of our city council meetings. And I like John's idea of having it multi-denominational. But some kind of an invocation, like he says, just to start out on, on a happy note.
Exactly.
And so I, I. And so I, I would like to see the invocation returned as well as keeping the salute to the flag. I think those are both very important to our city council.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah, I guess mine is more of a procedural question. The invocation was taken off without any discussion. In this case, you've got two council members that wanted to put it back on. I, I don't understand why it doesn't just go right back on. If it was just taken off unilaterally, why, why isn't it, why, why are we even having the discussion, I guess?
Okay, Kim?
Um, I am in the same boat as Councilman Gagliotti. I am not religious and I have to say that when I go to a government meeting and I, and there's religion, it makes me feel uncomfortable. But I'm willing to be flexible and part of the reason I'm uncomfortable is because it feels like you're excluding others when you focus on one religion. And so I, I want to be able to be flexible and I know for some, the invocation is very meaningful. And so I think we should do that. But I would like to have other religions represented as well. And so if we could maybe agree on a certain rotation or how we're going to do it, I, I just feel like I, you know, at any opportunity we have, we should always choose being inclusive. And this is one of those opportunities where we can really include lots of people. We represent the residents of Delray Oaks and I know if we go to every resident, they have all kinds of different religions that they believe in. And so I feel like we should, we should honor those residents and, and rotate through different religions. I don't, you know, I don't know what they would be, but I think maybe we can have that discussion, but I, I would, I would agree with, with John and that we should have the invocation and have it rotate through different religions.
Okay. I agree. I, it's about inclusion and non-denominational as well as, you know, I know that in San Jose, they have an improv troupe that comes in and they do this whole, you know, fun little thing about the council. So there's all kinds of ways. I mean, the invocation is meant to, just like you said, John, set a tone. And I think having a variety of voices is critical. So let's go out to the public. Mr. Krieger?
All right, yeah, I give everything you're saying, invocation. It's, a lot of people like it. It's meaningful to them, but it's a great opportunity to, to showcase some inclusiveness and that's an area that, that Delrocks would, would benefit from, from and helping to dispel any perceived, you know, lack of appreciation for that. So I teach at St. Carl's School now, a lot of you know that, and we celebrate, you know, can't get much more Catholic than that. And we celebrate bringing in various religions and, and when we have students that are Muslim or we've had Shinto's, we've had almost every religion I can think of represented at one point in time. And we always incorporate that and, and celebrate it. So I think it's a great idea to, to, to do that. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edon?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I never thought in a million years I'd be compelled to provide testimony as to why we should continue to have the invocation provided by the only pastor in Delray Oaks, Bob Hellum, representing the only church we have in Delray Oaks, the Church of the Oaks. They are members of our community. The Shinto Shrine, I've got friends, ten there, they're not members of Delray Oaks. We have one religious institution in Delray Oaks, that's the Church of the Oaks. They support us. I think we should support them. It's sad that the city council is now immersing itself in controversial issues. Instead of uniting the residents of our city, instead trying to divide them. As Dino Pick alluded to earlier, in the past, our city council members, whether Republican, Democrat, or nonpartisan, focused only on issues that helped our city as a whole. We deliberately refuse to address hot button national issues such as the solidifying our relationships and the ability to achieve consensus. Asking for God's blessing on our city council and our residents follows a tradition initiated by Congress. During the opening of every session of the Senate, the Senate chaplain provides the invocation, asking for God's blessing. The argument that having an invocation is divisive and is illogical and is itself divisive. We live in a Judeo-Christian nation. Christmas is a national holiday. The Ten Commandments are displayed behind the seated justices of the Supreme Court. And God we trust is on our currency. Inclusiveness is in the heart of the beholder. I worked for three years in Abu Dhabi, actually pronounced Abu Dhabi, a city in the United Arab Emirates in the Middle East. The country is over 95% Sunni Muslim and with just a few Shia and Christians. Every Christmas and Easter, my Muslim friends and coworkers would always wish me Merry Christmas and Happy Easter. During the Muslim holy days, Ramadan and the two Eids, I would in turn congratulate them on their religious observances and wish them well, well, something they always appreciated. We are not all the same. We have different beliefs. However, asking for God's blessings on all our residents of Delray Oaks, Christians, non-believers and believers can only help bring us together. Let's stop the nonsense of trying to divide our community and get back to the business of working together for the benefit of all residents. Focus on those things that cement all of us together towards a better Delray Oaks. Stay out of the national politics and the national hot button issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Clark?
It's just so funny when he does the timer, just when I'm trying to hit the unmute thing. Yes, we have a particular religious institution who is, in his invocations, is extremely non-denominational. And if we were in a community that had 40 or 50 churches in there, I, you know, I, I think that the other congress, council people that mentioned that are probably 100% right, but we're not in that situation. We're a very small community. We have a single religious organization and I think Reverend Hellum does a very good job of keeping it extremely vanilla. You know, there shouldn't be, and, and Scott probably said the most brilliant thing. If it was wiped out, why are we, just without even having a conversation, it should just be put back in without having a conversation as it was. But since we're here, congressmen shall make no law in the establishment of religion. Some people seem to interpret that as not letting religion or God into government assembly such as this one. If I may be permitted to say that an historically based examination would yield that the folks that came over here on the Mayflower were looking to escape the religion that the King in England had established and required everyone to follow. I think it's pretty easy to see that there is no such effort to establish a religion by doing an invocation. If it is anything, it is a moment that we take to hopefully acknowledge a higher power, however perceived, and given in hope that those in positions of power do not get caught up in their own arrogance and I know better than you attitudes that seem to afflict, inflict elected officials so easily. In the Washington Post, May 5th, 2014, the headline was, "Supreme Court Upholds Legislative Prayer at Council Meetings, Even If It Plainly Favors A Specific Religion." The Justice Anthony M. Kennedy said ceremonial prayer is but a recognition that since this nation was founded and until the present day, many Americans deem that their own existence must be understood by precedents far beyond the authority of government. So should we have an invocation? Absolutely. If for nothing else than having 30 to 40 seconds of not being consumed with our own self-importance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll come back to the council. So it sounds like we have agreement. Anybody have any further comments, questions?
Yeah, if I could just make a comment. I mean, I'm all about reducing drama for this council. And what I don't understand, Mayor, is based on what you just said, why did you even take it off in the first place?
You know, we took it off because, when we went to Zoom. It just made sense at the time. It stayed. Dino and I did this and now we're having it back. So let's have a motion.
And then I have a procedural question. If two, and maybe it's best for Alex, if, if you have two council members that say, hey, I, we would like this to be agendized, why? Why doesn't, or correction, that it, that it be included in the agenda? Then why wasn't it just added? I mean, why can't that just be added?
You know, the, the, the mayor generally works with staff to develop the agenda. But I think because of the comments from fellow council members as to, you know, my understanding is the mayor's understanding that, that during COVID, it was pulled off for convenience. And I think in response to some of the fellow council members inquiries, it was agendized as it seemed ripe to, to, to discuss. And I think that's, that's sort of how that happened.
Yeah, my only concern, and we're going to talk about this on the next agenda item, is what I'm afraid of is if any two council members want to put something on the agenda, it then becomes a discussion item as opposed to just putting it on the agenda.
Yeah, and that's in our, our municipal code, again, with deference, I think, to the city manager with regard to the city's bandwidth and, and what staff feels that they can, they can prepare. But I believe our code right now is two council members or the mayor can place items along with the city manager.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is if the two council members want it on there, why not just put it on there? I mean, two council members wanted the invocation on the, the agenda, why not put that, why, why do we even have to have a discussion?
I think, I, I don't know that we have to have a discussion, but I think it was agendized as, as a discussion and, and Mayor, and, and I know Councilmember Lintel has been interested in this, was just to have a little bit more of a roundabout, a round discussion. But I see what you mean now is not, not why was it just agendized for discussion, but why wasn't it just placed on the agenda? And I think the, the, the thought was that, you know, sort of a broader discussion was, was warranted at this point.
It says discussion action item, so it's, it's both.
If, if, if I may, the request was made to staff to place it as a discussion at this meeting. There weren't, there at no time did so far since I've been in this office, at no time have two council people just requested to place the invocation on the agenda. And then when it finally came to my office, it was as a discussion item.
I have a question to the mayor and it's to kind of Scott's point, but in the future, I mean, can two council, similarly that if the mayor can put, put an item on at their whim on the agenda, two council members can do that, but could they just put it on there as an agenda item without, without a discussion? And I, I can't think of any other, I can't think of any other example other than what this, that that would ever need to be in place. But to Scott's point, is that what the, is that the allowance that the, the two council members placing something on the agenda covers? It means that we could just, we could just put something on the agenda and it would just be there for, into perpetuity? Does that, is that, is that our privilege?
That would be.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be consistent with, with the reading of the municipal code that says can place things. The other thing to consider is some jurisdictions at the opening of a meeting have an action item entitled, you know, adoption of agenda. And so if something like that was to occur, then, then folks could talk about it. A similar, similar instance would be tonight with the item that was moved to consent agenda. So there is the opportunity to include that and perhaps
Interesting.
it, it's the council's pleasure to do that and sort of say, hey, before we start out on this meeting, let's move a few of these pieces around.
Okay.
But, but really, it, it's at the pleasure of the council of how they want to interpret that provision of the municipal code, whether placing something on the agenda means discussion or just, hey, we're doing this, it's on there.
Yeah, that's interesting. Okay, thank you. I, I don't want to belay this anymore. Just to also Scott's other point is that, you know, that we've had a lot of discussion about the discussion. So I think we should just move. Does someone want to make a motion? Pat, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add the invocation at the start of every city council meeting as well as keeping the salute to the flag. I think both are very important.
I'll second.
A potential friendly emotion, a motion to have a, a variety of of faiths represented or no? Ms. Shirley, did you have something?
Oh, I, I agree with your friendly amendment, but that's not it to me, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the maker of the motion. Did you, did you, did you hear the friendly amendment?
Yeah, are you, are you making the amendment since you brought it up?
No, I'm, I'm asking you. It's, it's a friendly amendment, meaning you can consider it. And you have to say yes or no. And then John has to say yes or no.
Right, right.
Yes.
Okay, and I, and I accept, and I, I accept it too. I'd like, I'd like to, you know, hear from others. I think that would be interesting.
Okay, great. Karen, could you do a vote, please?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Let's move on to new business 6G, discussion and possible action of time limits for city council meeting. Councilmembers Gagliotti and Donaldson, I don't know who would like to go first.
Scott, why don't you start? You've been far more eloquent this evening. I can't freaking get out, I can't get out in front of my tongue tonight, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, here we are, what, 9:30 and I, I just think that it's unfair to a lot of our residents that our meetings go as long as they do. Because they either have to go to bed or get up and go to work the next day. And I think we can make the meetings more efficient and I've actually talked to the mayor about it and gave some suggestions. And she was not receptive to it. And that's why I requested it to be agendized. We've shown in the past that we can conduct meetings in less than three hours. Mayor, you've done that in the past. And that includes all citizen participation that was necessary, along with, you know, completing any city business that, that we needed to do. I think there's a variety of ways and these are the things that I talked about with, with Mayor Kerr when I called her that we can get some efficiency. One of them is putting a time limit on presentations upfront. I don't think I've ever presented to an organization or gave a speech where I wasn't given a time limit. Put the high priority items upfront. Providing all materials for, for whatever is being agendized. It was a while back when the mayor put forth her concept for hiring a city manager and when that item came up, she presented something that was the first time the council had ever seen it. It took a long time for us to figure out exactly what her concept was. And then maybe eliminating some items that could be handled outside of the council meeting or, you know, like the, the last example with the, with the invocation. We probably, I don't know, I wasn't timing it, but at least 15, 20 minutes it took on that. But, you know, when, when I reached out to the mayor to, to ask her about maybe implementing some of these efficiencies, you know, if, if she is open to that, I mean, she runs the meeting, she, she sets the agenda. I don't think there's a, a need for a time limit. I would just like to see more efficiency in the meeting. And that, those are my comments.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I do want to see it. I want to see a time. I think that three hours is, is plenty. We, four meetings were three hours long and we used to cover far more complex agendas and far more controversial, you know, issues. So I do think that three hours for, for, for our city businesses is plenty of time, but the reason I like to have that is that there were times. But the reason I like to have that is that there were times in forum meetings where, you know, we were coming up to that three hour point. And, and Chairman Parker would say, look, guys, we have thirty minutes until we basically have to shut the door, you know? So let's, and, and it was, it was, it, it, people work on deadline. Um, they work better at deadline. When it's just open ended, the, the point that, that, uh, councilmember Donaldson brought up is that, that we don't tell our presenters that they have a certain block of time. That's something that for they did all the time. They said, you know, you have ten minutes to basically do this, and then we have discussion, and then we have public comment. And, and the, the thing that really kind of just lit me up was the last one was, was the presentation. That was one of the first presentations, and it went forty-seven minutes long, and I can't even remember what it was about, you know? Because it was just after, after fifteen minutes, I was so tuned out and, uh, and we, to me, that was just time wasted. Um, and, and it was, it was, it was an, it was an information item. We didn't even take action on it. Um, and then tonight, you know, the, the, the tax thing was interesting, but, um, you know, it was an information item, and it took, I, I timed that one, and that one took twenty-seven minutes. You know, the presentation alone took twenty-seven minutes. So I do think that putting basically our presenters kind of on a clock is going to help move, move the city business, uh, far along. Um, and I think having that, that, you know, that nine o'clock bewitching hour that's sitting out there, is, is going to help us, help us, I mean, it's a clock. It means that, you know, i- i- if we're, if we're dragging on a, if a discussion is going too long or something like that, we can pick it up. We can make it, we can make a decision and say we can table, we can move it out. But I like having that, um, you know, that, that time at the end. Everyone knows at nine o'clock, we're all going home, uh, at least, uh, or, or earlier. And, and I'll say this too, is that, you know, rarely do I get stopped. You know, I, I have, I have a lot of discussions with people, you know, I, I grew up in this neighborhood, and I've, there's people I've known for over fifty years in this neighborhood. But rarely do I ever get stopped about things, um, like in Safeway. Uh, and I, I've actually had two people come up to me, one person I knew, one person I didn't, and, but they knew that I was a council member, and they asked about this. They said, man, I can't, I, it was a long council meeting. I, I, I left at ten thirty. And I went, man, I was there until, you know, until eleven, and then we went into clothes. And so, so there, our, our residents are kind of commenting on how long our, you know, our council meetings are. And so I, I don't think that it's, it's, it's unwieldy to, to, to say, look, three hours is, to be able to cover city business, and, and then agendizing stuff that takes three hours, if, if that's, that's the way it is. So, again, I, I'm not very eloquent, and I'm just kind of traveling on, but, but those are my thoughts.
Okay, um, Pat?
Yes, I, I agree. Our meetings have become quite lengthy, and I don't feel that it's necessary. I feel there are several ways that we can shorten them without losing the importance of the issues. And one of them is limit the presentations to fifteen minutes. If the presenter wants to include more, more information, they can include it as hard copy in the packet, if, if they choose to do so, but their verbal, um, presentation, uh, should be limited.
We lost you, Pat, or I did.
Additional information could also be in the, uh, the hard copy of the packet as correspondence.
Did I lose you again?
Yeah, so.
They should be addressed to him prior to the council meetings. This would save time and also show him respect and consideration. And I think these three items could reduce considerably the, the lengthy, um, city council meetings.
Pat, could you, um, synthesize your three points one more time? We lost you twice during your, your discussion. So one was fifteen minutes for presentations.
Yes, and the second was to have council members report only on the boards that they're assigned to. And if they wanted to include other information that they would like the citizens to know, it could be included hard copy under correspondence. And issues. Pardon me?
The third item?
The third item is, um, the city manager, uh, in our case, the acting city manager. There's a lot of questions of him that could be handled prior to the city council meeting. And, uh, th- this would save time at the meeting. The, the council member would get the information that they needed, and they would also show him respect and consideration by addressing that, a- as a, a meeting between the council member and the, um, city manager. Those are the three things that I think would greatly reduce the time element for the city council meetings. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Shirley?
Um, I do agree, our meetings are long, but I think that's standard for city council meetings. Um, I feel like some of the suggestions I'm hearing would shave off just a few minutes here or there. I don't, I don't see that making a huge dent in our, in our meeting length. Um, I can see maybe, um, you know, uh, structuring the presentations so, you know, that they don't go on and on and on, that they know that there is some, you know, time limit to that. Um, I, I went over to, uh, Simon Bautista's, uh, um, website, just because, you know, I, I think of them as sort of a similar sized city. And I wondered, how many meetings do they have? And they have at least two to five meetings, um, monthly. Now, the length of their meetings are shorter, so, you know, maybe two to three hours. I just don't see how we could get our work done in the city if we were going to have one three-hour meeting a month. I think we either have to increase the number of meetings that we have. Um, I recognize that this is hard, um, on people. I think one of, another solution, and I know it's hard to put together packets, and so if you create more meetings, then it's, um, more work for our staff. Um, so one solution I would like to offer is that we, um, have our staff set the agenda, and we say we're going to cut off at, say, nine or whatever we decide it's going to be. And then everything rolls over to the next day, and we just continue, we have a, a meeting on the second day. So we have a meeting on Tuesday, and we have a meeting on Wednesday. There's no additional packets that need to be made. There, um, all of our residents are apprised of, of what needs to happen, and, and then we can get city business done. I, I'll be honest, I love our discussions. I, we are, as we know, we have different opinions, and it takes a while for us to, to work this out. And, um, this is democracy. This is, you know, transparency. This is doing this. We need, we owe this to our residents. And so, um, they elected us to be here to work things out in front of them. And so, um, and we need to do that. I, I mean, t- tonight is my daughter's sixteenth birthday. I'm, you know, and she, she knows that this is important business, and she was totally fine with celebrating another day as a family. So, um, I'm following through on, on what I need to do, and I just, I would want all the rest of our council members to also really consider what we need to do in the city, to move forward, to do good business, and to provide this opportunity for our residents to, um, to see what we're doing. So I, I have some options that I think could make a difference. I'll see what you think.
Thank you. Um, so I, uh, I, uh, agree. Um, you know, the agendas are put together by myself and the city manager. So I'll put things on, he'll put things on. Um, I frankly like you guys putting things on as well. Um, it isn't always an exact science. And, um, we have a, um, an acting city manager that's learning. And so sometimes we don't know how long something's going to take. So tonight, right, Jeff and I talked about moving the audit to the consent agenda. Um, so it's not as cut and dry as, um, you know, we only have three items and, you know, w- will end at nine or eight fifty. Um, the other thing is I think it's crucial that, like, um, Ms. Shirley said, the majority of other cities, um, in our neighborhood have at least two meetings. And it's not uncommon for them to go, uh, you know, Monterey starts four thirty, goes until six, takes a dinner, and then they go from seven to eleven often, twice a month. We have some serious business coming up, um, and it takes time. So, I mean, I would be fine to suggest, you know, a fifteen-minute presentation. Will some people go over? Of course. Um, but I'm not interested in shutting conversation down and shutting, um, information for us as well as our residents. So, um, I'm looking forward to hearing other options. But, you know, I, I don't want to control public comment. I don't want to control, you know, that kind of stuff. So if it comes down to presentations, that's one thing, but, um, we have a lot of work to do. So let's go out to the public. Uh, Bill?
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, City Council. A couple of things come to my mind. Um, when you're setting agendas, you could certainly ask the presenters that are, that are being agendized, how long their presentation would take. And maybe you mix and match some that would fit in within this three-hour window. I kind of agree, the meetings are getting a little long. I haven't had dinner yet, and it's almost ten o'clock, and I'm getting a little hungry. Doesn't show, but I am. Um, the other thing I've noticed is that, um, sorry, um, since the, um, Zoom world has come into our effects, a lot more participation. There's thirty-three people at this meeting tonight, almost all night. And it got down into the twenties when we got to the tail end of the presentation or tail end of the agenda. Normally, city council, by the time you get to that place, when they were down at City Hall, you have two, three people, maybe. You know, so I think Zoom has brought more input from the citizens into the meeting, which is just naturally making it run longer. I've talked three times tonight already, two or three. Maybe it's only two. Can't keep track. The last thing I would recommend is if you're coming up against a timeline, and I think a three-hour limit is probably not horrible, um, the written, the council reports, um, they are long, they are just mind, I'm sorry, I'm sure it's all interesting to the people that are doing it, but a lot of it's mind-numbing. How about written council reports in the agenda? If there's time at the meeting, they can be read. If they're not, they're there for everybody to read in the agenda. Nothing's getting lost in the shuffle, nothing's getting whitewashed or hidden. It's just not setting there, listening to somebody read about the seventeen meetings they went to, or the five meetings they went to, or the three they didn't go to. Um, we all want our council people to be engaged, and we want them to be active on the, uh, councils and committees and what have you that they're on. Um, I'm dying to know what happened at M1W yesterday, but I haven't had a chance to get a hold of anybody. But I'll figure it out. I'll, I'll find out, it's no big deal. But if it's just in writing at the end, if it's in writing, it's there, it's part of the record. I don't think we're shirking any responsibilities, and if there's time to read it, go for it. That's all I've got to say. Thanks, and have a nice evening.
Thanks, Bill. Scott?
A couple of people have spoke to this, uh, norms around different cities. And I would just add, having worked on foretag for the FAST, however many years, um, Fred and I expect to be up till about ten o'clock. Commonly, meetings end at ten, and then the city council has a vote. If business is important enough, then they go past ten. If not, they close the meeting. But, um, ten, ten o'clock is, is my experience of a norm. But I, but I think what I would offer is a more general observation, um, which, and I'll take tonight as an example, which a couple of people have done. Um, I came in a little late, and I apologize for that, so I, I didn't catch some of the earlier business. But there was a really useful discussion about the EPS economic analysis. And part of what happened through that discussion was the realization that there were important qualifiers to put on the contract, and that was the conclusion of the business. Um, that needed to happen through that discussion among the city council people. And that was followed by another beneficial exchange around integral innovations, and touched on a number of points related to city business. Again, um, really important. And that discussion rounded to the realization that we needed to take a slightly different course and, um, take it up later. Um, those are both things that needed the time to be discussed, and that brought us up to nine o'clock. So if nine o'clock were the limit, the city council this evening would not have gotten to the two pieces of business, um, we've discussed recently, with the one caveat that John brought up, which is that I wasn't here for the earlier information item. So my general observation is tonight, we've talked about impossible revision of the general plan, um, continuing development on Ford Ord. Uh, I know that there's state compliance with housing continually, uh, at our doorstep, uh, developing a general economic direction, um, let alone hearing from and educating the public. So my general observation, I guess, would be that a city council be mindful to not set a limit whereby, uh, they end up making themselves a bottleneck for city business, uh, whatever you decide this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Gary?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, we'll keep it short. Um, you're saying what Bill was saying about the written reports. I thought we'd gone through this before, and I, I, I guess we're still getting them. My suggestion would be write them up. We don't need to be read to, they don't need to be read to us. But what you could do, make them more accessible, is hang them on, you know, you guys provide them in a, in a, in a whatever document, we can turn them PDFs, hang them on the website right below the video. There, so people don't have to go looking for them, they're right there. So someone will search the reports, they're right there, you don't have to go looking for them, and we save all that time. Uh, if you do want to put a time limit on it, maybe consider doing, I think it's what Seaside does, is that they stop, I read in the paper, where they stop and they think about, do we continue? Do we stop? And if you stop, uh, council member showed his idea about continuing the next day is great, so we can save all that staff time for another meeting. But, you know, that, you can put a time in there if you, if you feel like you need to, but, um, but leave the option open to, no, you know what, let's just go ahead and finish that one, we're done. You should give yourself that flexibility. Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put a, yeah, we all turn into pumpkins in there. Um, and I think it is getting late, and I'm tired too. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Gary. Uh, Kevin?
Hi, uh, sorry, let me turn my video on as well here, uh, trying to, sorry, there we go. Um, you know, I, I just want to just, Scott and, and Scott said things so eloquently as he always does. Basically, I just want to say, you know, kudos to him. I, I agree with everything he just said. The other thing I just want to mention is that I don't want anyone to confuse a short, efficient meeting as a good meeting. Right? We've had plenty of really short, efficient meetings over the twenty, uh, almost twenty years that I've been living here. Um, and many of them were really, uh, unfulfilling as a resident, because there was no discussion. Things just got railroaded through from the perspective of the residents not being part of the conversation. Um, and I think we've seen a big change lately, um, and for, for me, I'm really appreciative of that change. Um, and as was also mentioned, we have a ton of people coming to these meetings now, right? And they take up time. Everybody likes to hear themselves talk. I'm doing it right now, right? The council members themselves spend a lot of time of these three or four hours talking, right? So we all have little elements to blame in here. Residents are talking, I have a time limit right now. Um, I might suggest, uh, being, you know, if you're considering putting time limits on things, uh, maybe don't look further than yourselves on occasion. Um, and not to be too blunt about it, but, uh, go through any of the la- the latest recordings of our past city council meetings and make some time, uh, time measurements about who's doing the talking. It maybe, it may surprise you. So keep up the good work. Talk about the things that you need to talk about. I appreciate it all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other public comments? Mr. Clark?
Hi. Okay, I unmuted myself. Okay, okay. Well, first of all, John, I think you have a, I, I get along with you a lot because we think a lot alike, and yes, you have to have a target. You have to have a goal that you're going to shoot to. I often wonder, though, maybe you couldn't be shooting for two instead of three hours. And again, I don't know if we're having some process trying to recreate the wheel as we're all talking about all these possible solutions, because we do have a fundamental problem going on here, and we don't even have to compare ourselves to any city. If you go back and you take a two-year survey of two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, you will find that the average of those meetings was eighty-five minutes, one hour and twenty-five minutes over a two-year spread. During that five years, they ran two hours or longer five times, okay? In the last two years, two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, the average meeting length is over a hundred and thirty-two minutes. Okay, and of that time, we've gone over two hours fourteen times. So let me see if I can get this up here. Maybe I can't, which is unfortunate. I can, I can send you my spreadsheet. I'll just read it to you. So for two years of the previous administration, two years, eighty-five minutes, one hour and twenty-five minutes. Two years of this administration, a hundred and thirty-two minutes, that's two hours and twelve minutes. So that's a gain of one point five hours every single meeting. Now, besides all of our time, that has to be nearly five to seven hundred dollars plus for our lovable city attorney, Alex Lorca. And, um, now, where are we in two thousand twenty-one? And um, now, where are we in two thousand twenty-one so far? I'm glad you're sitting down for this. Two hundred and forty-one minutes, an average of four hours every meeting. So Alex, you may make partner this year just simply for the additional billable time you're getting for our city meetings. So I'm just saying, you have history to look at, you know, something, something seriously is going on. An hour and twenty-five for the two hours of two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen to over nearly four hours that we're at now. So there's some fundamental thing that's happening here that's causing that uh meeting to increase. Um, what else was I gonna say? Oh, and before, and I talked to several people, and they thought, well, maybe it's because of Zoom meetings. Well, I've talked to several CEOs in the area. I said, are Zoom meetings going any longer than in-person meetings? And they said, no, our meetings are the same length, whether it was Zoom or in person. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much, guys. And if you if you want the spreadsheet, let me know.
Thanks. Um, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Um, I just wanted to uh share that um, I mentioned it earlier that I'm reaching out to um, uh, some uh residents um uh about, my mailing list is large, but I get about four hundred, three to four hundred regular readers. Um, during COVID, I was sending messages every month on updates and um uh valuable information on uh vaccines and things like that. And now that we're um zipping through the the uh COVID tiers, I've shifted a bit to surveys. And so what I'm going to be doing is before it uh each and every council meeting, I'm going to be surveying uh this large group of residents on their opinions. Um, there are some people that come to council meetings and are loud and proud. Um, but as we all know, that there's a lot of our neighbors that either can't come, are intimidated by coming, don't want to come, uh, whatever. So this is a way for them uh to voice their opinions. So I asked how they feel about uh time limits. I got uh forty-one responses, which I'm pretty proud of the first, the first go around. And um eighty-eight percent said no time limits. They believe that um long city council meetings, I'm going to read some of the um responses. Uh, long city council meetings are part of the job. Limiting the time for these meetings will not help foster a sense of community and communication for with our local representatives. Uh, some were a little harsh. Time limits on city meetings is absurd. Matters must be thoroughly discussed in session in order for the council to make educated uh decisions and for the public to be informed. That's how a democracy works. Um, you'd uh, there's some that were pretty uh clear that said, if you don't want to spend time going through um city council uh business, then perhaps this isn't the right position for you. So um, but I got a lot of comments, and like I said, eighty-eight percent of the of the folks do not um favor time limits. Now that said, I think we can um have a conversation, you know, I and and Jeff, um, do you have conversations with presenters on on how long um they should go or how much information they have?
Yes, we do. Um, I I tell them that it's generally fifteen to twenty minutes, depending on the topic, of course. Pardon me. Many times that uh that's, that's not the case. Um, sometimes they go over. Uh, they always say, they always say they understand, but the talking always seems to take longer. And, you know, I I will add portions of those presentations are not just the presenters. They're the people who have public comment and council members as well. Uh, you know, tonight as an example.
So Jeff, um, you know, you and I work um uh closely on the agenda. And uh we, as a council, set a very aggressive um strategic planning goals for the next six months. And so the basis for the majority of the agendas are are the tasks that we that we gave um uh acting city manager Hoynes. So um, uh, I'm going to call on you again, Jeff. Um, do you see? I don't, it doesn't feel to me like we have frivolous conversations or frivolous agenda items. Um, and and I do have to say that Jeff and I go back and forth. I ask him to take things off. Um, he'll say yes sometimes, uh, sometimes like today, he said no. Um, and so we work together on that. Is there any other um way that you think uh we can um address this and make it more efficient?
There are several ways. There have been several suggestions, you know, putting more stern time limits on presentations and or limiting the number of presentations depending on the month. We did a couple of things where we, you know, part, part of it, it's not only time, but I I will say, one of the residents said, it is money. We we pay consultants and we pay city attorneys and uh project staff to wait around for presentations sometimes. So we actually did a quick math analysis and moved some presentations around and put things on consent agenda. Uh, in discussions with a city attorney, we can put non-critical, more non-critical things probably on a consent agenda to shorten some of these things, such as the uh audit, since there are no findings or anything that stuck out. Um, it can always be pulled. Um, but that could shorten some of the discussions if there's only one person that wants to talk about a particular thing. There are things we can do. Um, where, of course, this has just come up in the last few meetings where there's a concern. And and we're working on them, and we're, you know, we tried a couple of times today. Uh, but I will add this, we do have an aggressive agenda because we have aggressive six-month uh strategic objective list. Uh, you know, we we tacked off two or three, four more things on our strategic objective list uh because of the timeline that is on that list. I I know we have a lot of city business to do. The other caveat I'm going to say is uh we have a small staff. We have two and a half full-time admin people in the city. Uh, the longer the meetings go, the more comments, the more minutes, the more minutes that have to be typed up. Um, the more time we have to spend on the beginning or the the before and the aftermath of a of a city council meeting. It it, these meetings wear on staff, uh especially as small as we are, because we also have to attend to the rest of city business. And I I think we'll have those discussions coming up in budget about staffing in the front office. I stand during these meetings. I'll be here to conduct the city business. Whatever you decide as a council, I will execute as far as length of meetings or what we need to get done. But I also want to make sure that we don't wear our staff out with these long meetings. And in, again, perhaps, you know, we used to have three full-time people. Um, two of them were extremely experienced in the front. Now we have one extremely experienced and one new person who's learning, so that slows us down as as well and 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 spreads uh uh spreads our bandwidth thin. So whatever you decide, though, and and we'll always look for ways to shorten the meeting.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, so what I would actually like to suggest is um that I I think it's been a great conversation. Um, I really enjoyed the public uh input. And uh what I would like to suggest is there's, before we make a hard decision, that um uh you give Jeff and I a couple of months and see how we do.
I'd like to do, I'd like to, I definitely want to see how you guys do. Um, I I'd like to actually make a motion to actually put a three-hour time limit on it and see if we can, if we can make that uh and then have the ability to vote, to extend the meeting if if we're in the midst of um uh of of a discussion and we have to go longer, I think, or or there's, there's still some city business uh needs to be taken care of. Um, and I also like some of the comments that I heard about the written board reports. Um, I think that's a fascinating idea because I, towards the end of the meeting, you're so burnt from all the other stuff that it really, I I think the reason I certainly am droning is just because I I'm just tired, I'm just talking. And so uh, so I like that idea, and and I would make that part of the recommendation. If we are regularly, you know, we, I, if we're regularly after, at the end of, you know, two or three months or whatever, and we're we're, we're making our time, we're 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 making more efficiency, then let's, let's open, let's open that discussion and and remove the time limit. But for right now, I'd like to put that in there, just for no other reason, just because it it kind of, it's a forcing factor. So that's my motion, because I'd like to, I'd like to put a three-hour limit with the with the ability to vote, to extend. Uh, and potentially go with council member Shirley's, you know, how do we pick up the the balance of the um uh the work? Um, I think that vote um would, in that vote, we would uh, we would determine how we're going to finish out the uh the city's business. And I'd like that our board reports are written and posted. I like that a lot. That's my motion.
John, instead of, instead of any verbal for reports?
Yeah, instead of any verbal. No, I just think, and I I totally agree with the residents. I mean, I'm just, yeah, exactly. I I absolutely agree with that. I mean, uh, as much as I do like to talk and as much as Kevin called me out on it, and he's right, but um, I think I agree. I totally agree.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. And I I think um, you know, we can, we can create those efficiencies and not limit the public input and the public participation that's so critical. And I agree with both Kim and Allison, and you know, John talked about it as well. Um, that's a critical part of what we do, but I, we could be so much more efficient by giving a hard time to the presentations to include the amount of time for questions. And if it goes beyond that, maybe we have a separate meeting for a presentation, for example. So give them ten minutes, and and they'll make it happen. I mean, I I always do that. Somebody gives me a hard, a hard time on a presentation, I'm going to be more succinct with what I'm trying to say. And then prioritize it, realizing that what John just said, um, we hit the, if we, we hit the hard time, at least the highest priority business has been adhered to. I think that's important. And then, you know, Kevin and John hit on it. A lot of times, you know, we've seen the enemy, and it's us that we, that we just talk too long. And um, or we don't prepare the way that we should. So that's a aspect of it as well. So um, yeah, I I second Councilmember Gagliotti's motion.
God, did you add anything to his motion? Three hours, vote to extend and written reports?
No, that's good.
Okay.
The, 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 I mean, we we do expect, like, just like you said, we do expect the the mayor and and the uh acting city manager to be working on those efficiencies that that you guys have, you talked about, you know, like the uh putting hard, hard stops on the, on the, um, on the presentations and that sort of stuff. I mean, I'm assuming those efficiencies are going to come from your guys'.
That will come from Jeff, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, or Pat, did you have a question or a comment?
Um, no, I just, yes, I do have a comment. Um, I hope that you and Jeff incorporate some of the suggestions in addition to those that were mentioned, some of the suggestions that came out this evening regarding reducing the time limit of the of the city council meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Karen, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shirley?
Hi.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Hi.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Hi.
Mayor Kerr?
Hi. Okay, so it passes unanimously. Um, let's move on to staff reports. Uh, city manager report, please.
I only have fourteen pages, so this shouldn't take too.
We've got yours in writing, too.
Um, I will be brief. I just want to give a couple of quick highlights. Uh, we recently held a very successful AD workshop. I'd like to thank um not only uh Denise Duffy and Associates and uh Joe Headley and uh others uh but staff for putting that on. I thought a lot of great information came out of that. Uh, it was very successful. We had a lot, a very, a good turnout and very good input from from our residents. So I want to thank them for that. Uh, one of the other things I'd like to point out is a garden center update. Myself and the city attorney have been reaching out and having uh back and forth discussions with the garden center's council. Uh, we are at about thirty days of a sixty-day timeline that we have given them. Uh, and I believe the city attorney has also reached out today uh to note that fact and to uh see if there's anything they need from the city to help them facilitate the requirements that the city has put on them. Uh, as mentioned earlier, another point I'd like to make uh about Fortag and the uh talking about design, uh, this also has to do with the garden center. I know sometimes the city takes a while to get business done. Uh, and and there's a lot of comment about it, but understand that we are doing things behind the scenes, and I think one of the things we're really working hard on now is, as you've seen with our negotiations with the garden center and our our talks with Tamsin with Fortag. Uh, part of the timing of this was to try and solve the haul road issue and permitting and use of it, and at the same time, uh, work with the garden center to get them within their lease. Uh, part of those discussions were to actually try and use the haul road so that we don't do any more environmental damage, building retaining walls, uh, other bike paths, tearing at more of Work Memorial Park, converting it, properly permitting it. And the section that is not being used, you know, our hope is, and our discussions with Tamsin and Fortag is, as part of the process, they will remove the rest of the the road and revert it to its natural habitat. So uh, those things are all moving around behind the scenes. Uh, staff is working very hard. I will say this. We're actually down to one and a half. Uh, as some of you may know, Karen is injured. She may be out a while. Um, so if you'll have patience, but we'll still train, uh, keep the strategic objectives going, get the packets done and shorten these meetings, and that's it.
Thanks, Jeff. Let's uh move on to council reports. Let's start with Ms. Shirley.
I'm gonna skip mine. I, it's all written. I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Uh, Scott Donaldson?
Yeah, I would skip mine, but Bill's hanging in there with me. So here you go, buddy. Going to give you the update on Monterey One. We actually had two meetings. Uh, the first one, we provided guidance and approved funding to update the SEIR. And then last night, we approved the SEIR, and it was a unanimous vote to approve it. The Pure Water Monterey facility is still on track injecting water into the basin, and it continues to put more and more each month. We just completed the third injection, the deep injection well, that that has been complete. And then next week, we'll start construction on the fourth one. And really, the only constraint we have now in terms of putting the water in the ground is getting that fourth uh deep well done. And once that's done, then we'll we'll be completely on track with delivering um what we promised. So that's my report.
Uh, thanks. Uh, John?
I'm, I'm with Kim. I'm gonna uh submit my comments written.
Okay, Pat?
Okay, I'll make it brief. Seaside sanitation canceled their April meeting. And uh Community Human Services, I attended a board meeting where there was an excellent presentation on the parent education program. It was reported there were four graduating classes totaling thirty-five parents. The CEO reported uh that we are uh proposing collaboration with Partners for Peace and the Monterey County Chapter of National Alliance on Mental Illness. Proposals are due uh April twenty-second, and awards will be for a period of two years. The Development Director reported things are looking good with grants and donations. And the personnel policy revisions were approved. And then I also attended a special CHS meeting. Uh, it was a closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I too, I'm going to uh PDF my report in. So um, please, I hope all of you take a note of the correspondence in the uh packet, and our next meeting date is May twenty, well, our next regular meeting date is Tuesday, May twenty- And our next meeting date is May 20, well, our next regular meeting date is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 at 6 o'clock. But we'll see everybody back here next Thursday. All right, on that, we're adjourned.
Good night, all. Take care.
Good night. Good night.